Mark yourself present with a green, yes. Mark yourself not here, in your pajamas at home, with red, no. Those joining us, we are voting right now to say our attendance. Hit your buttons, quick. Correct. All right, I'm gonna let it advance through your screen before I open the meeting, and I'm just gonna take a moment to talk to you before we really commence the business before us. So after Thursday evening, I thought very hard about what to say to you in response to some of the things that occurred, and so I wanted to share these thoughts with you before we commence this evening. So it is really important to keep the legislative body as a place where all voices are welcome and included, that there's equal access to the meeting even from those you disagree with. Town meeting is a place where we discuss and ask questions on issues of our community, but is not acceptable to discuss individuals. Members are hearing comments made by other members in their seats, and it hinders the spirit of the meeting. The home of the legislative branch of our government is not the appropriate place to voice them for others, to hear, and you'll get much further discussing issues with people in person versus issues about people. You are in very good, sound quality environment, which was designed for sound to travel. Wonderful performances, band think, travels. In addition, people can read your phones and computers, so please do not text negative comments about other members on your phones. You are being read over your shoulder. When we break decorum, it breeds hostility, division, and maybe even anger among us, and degrades the atmosphere we all long to be returned that predates 2020. If we want a sense of normalcy in a tradition that is older than our Commonwealth itself, we need to be unanimous as a meeting to have the decorum and restraint from putting one's selves' immediate wants over the needs of others. Points of order or points of privilege are in a place to serve this goal. Your moderator will never be offended if you use the wrong one, if you need a clarification as things are moving fast in an atypical fashion, you are unsure how to do something, a member broke decorum, or you want a policy and procedures checked. You are just to rise, say, excuse me, Madam Moderator, state point of order or point of clarification, point of privilege, and state what you need support in. There are some previous practices that I continue today from my predecessor, and there are also practices from many predecessors before me. And as time goes on, dollar amounts grow, our population grows, our needs grow, our state mandates grow, and technology embeds itself in our tradition. I reminded that change is hard on most and easy on few. It is not a perfect world, and your moderator will make mistakes, shift from traditions that do not work for this body, as all of those before me have. However, please recognize that when I serve as Madam Moderator, I'm here to support this body. I deeply believe in our legislative branch of government and the town of Winchester. I have been in the advocate hot seat in government. I am not interested in doing that, and I chose to leave it. I do not want to vote in the work before you, but want to be here to support that is a fair vote, whatever that vote may be. The moderator here is to support your questions, to help you get information so you can make informed votes, and to provide equal and fair opportunities for all voices. I am here also to teach and create environments so people want to participate in the legislative government. It is one of the many reasons communication is directed always to the moderator. The decisions I make when I'm acting as your moderator, I try to make for the best interest of the whole, not the parts. We have a lot of work, and our warrants have grown in size. As we deliberate, let us advocate for our positions, but not at the expense of others. Let us remember that there is immense gap between saying I am right and saying I believe I am right, and that our neighbors with whom we disagree are good people with hopes and dreams as true and high as all of ours. And let us always remember that in the end, caring for each other inside this community of Winchester is of far greater importance than any difference we may have here. With that, I ask the 2023 Fall Town Meeting, night number three, will please come to order. With Town Meeting requiring 100 members for a quorum, we have 125 in attendance at this time. There is sufficient number of members present to permit us to open the meeting, and so I do so declare. Welcome to all, to our Town Meeting members, welcome back. I hope you had a nice, long weekend. To our veterans again, thank you so much for your service and dedication to our company, our country, and to also our community. We will continue our meeting tradition with a pledge of allegiance. For those members who would like the option to join me, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may please be seated. Let's move right on to business. We are going to continue with our Town Meeting with Article number 11. Number 11 can be found on page 15 of your Fall Annual Town Meeting warrant and motion booklet. As a reminder, there is a scribbler's error in the motion, and that it is not 9-47-0, but it is, the parcel number is 9-147-0. At this time, the goal is to break around 8 o'clock again, and we'll see how far we go. It really is up to the Town Meeting, how far we get this evening. If we needed, we can go to the fourth night. It is moved and seconded that the Town vote to authorize a select board to purchase a certain parcel located off of Waterfield Road and containing approximately .41 acres of land, said parcel being identified as parcel 9-147-0 from the Town's assessor's maps, and also being shown on a certain plan on file with the Town Clerk, and further to transfer from the sale of the land account the sum of $155,000 for such acquisition. This is being brought before Town Meeting by the Select Board, and it does require two-thirds vote, as it requires land transfer. On behalf of the Select Board Chair, Mr. Richard Mucci.
Good evening, Town Meeting. Thank you, Madam Moderator. It's my privilege to present on Article 11. I touched on this in my opening remarks, but just to put the warrant article up there, this involves a motion for us to purchase what we affectionately term the orphan parcel, which I'll get to in a moment, from the MBTA, which comprises right now the Waterfield lot. So we're asking for authority to purchase that parcel from the MBTA using funds from the sale of land account in the amount of $155,000. So as you can see behind me, the red outline is the orphan parcel. For decades, or I should say a decade, the Town, the MBTA, and Pan Am, yes, Pan Am, have been trying to figure out who owns this piece of parcel. And about two years ago, the MBTA and Pan Am determined that it was the MBTA's parcel. As you can see, this parcel comprises the entrance to our Waterfield lot, which is currently used as a driveway to get in and out of the lot. It's 1,798 square feet. It's used as a driveway access, as I mentioned. We've explored many avenues over the years to acquire this parcel, including pending legislation, which you see on the right there. The MBTA, after some discussions in the last year, is willing to transfer ownership of the parcel to the Town for the MBTA appraised value of $155,000. That was what the MBTA, their appraiser, appraised the value for. Under the proposed redevelopment of the Waterfield lot, the parcel is necessary to construct the proposed building designed by Civico at this time. And that process right now is in the permitting stage with the planning board. This shouldn't come as a surprise, because in the land development agreement that became before this body, there was a paragraph in there that required the Town to attempt to acquire the parcel from the MBTA or Pan Am, and that we would coordinate efforts with the developer in order to facilitate acquiring the parcel. So this is the Civico development as it stands today. As you can see, some of these renderings are included in the planning board packet that has been permitted, submitted for permitting. You can see, in the left picture, you can see that the headhouse building that kind of is street level, that's kind of where the orphan parcel is. And then in the lower right-hand corner, you can see maybe those left two windows, those right two windows is kind of where the orphan parcel is roughly. This is the footprint of the Civico development as it stands today, with the orphan parcel in red. You can see that that alleyway and the tip of that building on the right-hand side, if you're looking at it from the street, are in the orphan parcel. So it's necessary, as we told Civico in the land development agreement, to attempt to acquire this parcel, and that's exactly what we've done. We're asking you to support Article 11, as it will support our endeavor with Civico to build on the Waterfield lot. If anything, the Town should own the complete Waterfield parcel as well. It doesn't make sense to have this little piece out there. So I ask you to support Article 11. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May we have a recommendation from the planning board? On behalf of the planning board chair, Deejurious.
Good evening. The planning board voted unanimously to support this article. The control of this parcel is required for the Town to proceed with any development on the Waterfield lot, and to fulfill this acquisition is required to fulfill the Town Meeting's directives to the Select Board regarding the lot. My apologies. Thank you.
Thank you. May we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee? On behalf of the Finance Committee Chair, Dr. Miller.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. FinCom recommends favorable action. It was 12-member vote, unanimous. This is the language that Select Board Member Chair, Mr. Mucci, referred to. Of course, this is an example where FinCom's unanimous vote, we came to that vote probably from a variety of spots, the chair didn't vote, but this is just an additional expense that I think we're going to have to, we're gonna have to pay. And as Mr. Mucci stated, I think it makes sense that, FinCom believe it makes sense to put this parcel together as well. Thank you.
Thank you. May we have a recommendation from the Housing Partnership Board? On behalf of the Housing Partnership Board, the Chair, Mr. Serbeer.
Madam Moderator, Town Meeting members, my name is John Serbeer. I chair the Housing Partnership Board. The Housing Partnership Board, like the other boards, voted unanimously to support adoption of Article 11. The housing development proposed for the Waterfield site is consistent with the zoning that was adopted by Town Meeting for the Central Business District. It will be rental housing with 40 of the 60 units serving moderate-income households. This is greater housing income diversity than existing in any other Winchester development. Implementation of this project will contribute to the economic and social vitality of the Town Center and will increase the real estate tax revenue collected by the Town. So I thank you. I encourage a positive vote so that implementation of this project can proceed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, Town Meeting members, if you have any questions or comments you'd like to make, the microphones are available for you. Seeing no one rise, I believe you are ready for the vote. A two-thirds vote is required. We will be using our clickers. Give us one moment while it gets ready. If you vote in the affirmative, it means that you are interested in authorizing the Select Board to purchase the parcel that is off of the Waterfield Road. If you vote no, it means you are not interested in authorizing the Select Board to purchase this lot. So as we scroll through this, a Town Meeting member so kindly reminded me that under Article 4, the moderator should not be calling the votes until we scroll through all the votes. And I know that it might be painful to wait till we scroll through all of them, but I think it will fix also a lot of issues that we've been having and help support the Town Clerk better. So I'm going to wait till it scrolls all the way to make sure everyone who's here, vote is registered correctly before I call it. And maybe I'll start finding interesting ways to fill the time. But I haven't thought of them yet, so tonight you get this. Silence. It's actually, it's not bylaw, I was quoting the bylaw for Town Meeting, Section 4 of our bylaws regarding electronic voting. It's not regarding anything on the warrant. Is everyone's clicker working? You just say, excuse me, Madam Moderator, point of order, my vote didn't register, and we will register it up here before I call the vote?
All that you just said.
All right. Can you please state your name?
Yes, Deborah Peter, 357.
And how do you vote?
Yes. Thank you.
What is, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes? So we have two additional yes? Yes?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you. Deputy Moderator, way to go.
So they registered incorrectly?
Yes, it registered incorrectly. Yours didn't take at all? Okay. With 145 members voted, 97 required for adoption. There are 143 in the affirmative, two in the negative. The affirmative has it, and the motion is passed. Moving on to the next article, which is number 12. Number 12 can be located on page 16 of your motion and background booklet. "It is moved and seconded that the Town vote to appropriate $100,000 from free cash for testing and engineering services for repair and/or remediation work associated with the Winchester High School and all costs incidental and related thereto." This motion is coming before you from the Education Facilities Planning and Building Committee, more lovingly referred to as the EFPBC. On their behalf is Mr. Chris Nixon.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Everybody hear me okay? Thank you. I wish I could say it's a pleasure to be here tonight, but honestly, not so much, just because I don't like being the bearer of bad news. But nonetheless, I am here on behalf of your Standing Building Committee, seeking $100,000 of free cash to go towards additional testing and engineering for design packages to address some deteriorated concrete conditions that we've discovered here at the Winchester High School over the past year to year and a half. So as you'll recall from my introductory comments last week, under Article 1, post-COVID, DPW began to discover some areas of some cracking and deformation in some of the vinyl tile here at the high school on the first floor, initially in some limited areas. And these instances were also limited to the original 1970 structure at the time. They did bring this to the attention of the EFPBC, and it was definitely on DPW's radar. But once it was there, they actually began to see that these areas of deterioration were spreading, and they were beginning to appear elsewhere in the high school. The image that I'm actually sharing behind you, the image sort of to the bottom of the screen, shows that the deterioration had spread to other flooring materials as well. What you see in the bottom image, and I hope it appears, I think you can see the cracks there, this is actually porcelain tile that existed where the Commons meets the entrance to the A Wing, so when you come in the building, bang, a right. Our custodial staff noted hairline cracks at the beginning of last school year. By the end of last school year, the crack had actually gone all the way across the floor. There were multiples, and it was coming apart, as you see here in the image, to give you an idea of sort of the rate of decay and concern. So last spring, EFPBC conducted site visits here at the high school of these areas with DPW staff, the Superintendent of Schools, the Chairs of the School Committee, and the Capital Planning Committee. And out of concern for the spread of the flooring failure, as well as the increasing severity of these deformations, the EFPBC last spring engaged a forensic engineering firm, SGH, to conduct an in-depth evaluation of what we were seeing. This past summer, SGH engineers made multiple visits to the high school. They sounded the entire first floor, they corded samples for lab analysis, and they inspected over 90% of the crawl spaces here in the building. So very thorough. This image of the guidance hallway, which is right outside these doors, is as it appeared in March. I hope you can see from the reflections what we're talking about. It looks like rippling water, doesn't it? Given that the surface had become a trip-fall hazard by last spring, the EFPBC authorized the tile to be removed, the floor to be leveled below, and carpet tile to be put down as a temporary measure for just this school year. And helpfully, SGH engineers were on hand when the tiles came up in August. Much to our disappointment, when we pulled the floor up, concrete and rusted reinforcing steel came up with it, and I hope you can see that in the image. We were struck at the shallow placement depth of reinforcing steel, and we quickly understood that the rusting of the rebar, what we call rust jacking, was what was driving the cracking and the deformation of the concrete. And I've been asked to sort of explain further. When we say we were struck by the placement, we would typically see reinforcing steel embedded deeper in the concrete. The closer the steel is to the surface of the concrete, the more vulnerable it is if there are contaminants that are introduced into the structure. Glossy surfaces like vinyl tile can be easy for us to judge from a distance when they're not perfectly smooth. More subtle are the carpeted areas, like the guidance department. And I hope you can see in this image the shadow on either side of the door leaf. There's no shadow in the middle, because the carpet is coming almost in contact with the door leaf. In its inspection of crawl spaces at Winchester High School, SGH confirmed DPW's finding that we have rust jacking, concrete spalling, and delamination below the slab in some areas as well. This image I'm sharing with you is of the intersection of the Commons at the A Wing, so actually very near that porcelain tile area I showed you a moment ago. I'm showing you exposed rusted rebar to the left and at the bottom of the cast-in-place concrete beam. But what's a little harder maybe for you to see, and I've highlighted here, is if you move to the right, we actually see about five to six feet of cracks along that beam as well. When the cracks are there, the concrete's no longer doing anything structurally, it's just hanging there, and at some point, it will fall. In some instances, concrete has actually already let go, and there is a risk of damage to building systems if this continues, as in some cases, piping is suspended from Unistrut directly below some of these affected areas. So why is this happening, and what did the SGH team discover last summer? While the normal alkalinity of concrete and its pH levels typically protects reinforcing steel from oxidation or corrosion, lab testing by SGH has confirmed that two different chemical processes are underway that have exposed rebar in some areas to corrosion. In the first instance, chloride contamination, literally salts, have led to some topside rust jacking and concrete spalling. While in other areas, particularly the crawl spaces I showed you, so-called carbonation is the culprit, with extended exposure to CO2, certainly if we have higher levels of CO2, carbon dioxide can actually penetrate the concrete, and over time, it mixes with the hydration products of concrete, forms calcium carbonate. Calcium carbonate can actually attack that normal protective barrier around reinforcing steel. So both of these instances are playing out at Winchester High School. As many of you will recall, the new Winchester High School is actually a gut renovation and a modest expansion of our original 1970 building. The reinforced concrete structure and slabs were kept in place. As I mentioned at the outset, no flooring failures are seen or detected in areas of the addition. Further, at this time, we do not see a connection between the high school renovation project and the deterioration we're seeing here in the original structure. We haven't seen anything yet, but we're looking. Lastly, deterioration was catalogued in a limited number of areas, though scattered throughout the building. And I'm gonna go through this quickly to give you an idea of where, in this instance, we're seeing topside, in the A Wing, in the B Wing, in the C Wing, in the D Wing, where we're gathered right now in the auditorium, and in the E Wing as well. So if you take this in and you look at the glass and you see it as half-empty, we can appreciate that there are multiple areas affected at the high school. It is, in many of our minds, a new building, so it's most unfortunate that this is happening. The deterioration is spreading, and it is accelerating. We need to fix it, and it's not gonna be cheap. And even more concerning, we don't know yet what it's gonna cost. Hopefully, we will if you approve Article 12. But if you take a different point of view, the good news is, it does appear limited, so far as we know, only on the first floor. The good news is, we know the cause, and there are established and reliable fixes for this condition. Acting now means that we can control the cost. If we wait, the deterioration accelerates, and with the cost of escalation, it becomes more expensive, a point Mr. Mucci made the other night. However you look at the glass of water, the EFPBC asks that you act tonight to approve Article 12. Final comments. With your approval of the article, we can engage the SGH team to prepare detailed engineering drawings and cost estimates for the repair and remediation of the damage that we have discovered here. Included in this request are funds for some additional testing to more conclusively rule out any carbonation contamination in areas that may not have shown themselves yet. It's important for me to share you all tonight that in its summer work, SGH deliberately sampled a number of areas in the high school that showed no visible deterioration. And happily, the lab results showed no contamination. So that's good news. We hope that it continues. We look forward to engineering solutions with cost estimates prior to Spring Town Meeting for discussion with the Capital Planning Committee, the School Committee, the Finance Committee, and the Select Board, so that we may find a source of funding for this much-needed work. My last note tonight is on behalf of the EFPBC. I do want to I do want to thank the Department of Public Works, particularly Pete Lawson, Chris Conway, and our high school-based team who helped assist SGH in their summer work, and they really did a great job getting some of these troubled areas ready for our students for the start of school. Thank you for your attention, and I welcome your questions. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you very much. May we have a recommendation from the select board? Chair, Mr. Mucci.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The select board unanimously voted favorable action on this article.
Thank you. May we have a recommendation from the finance committee?
Thank you, Matthew. Finance committee recommends favorable action. We voted unanimously in favor of this. The rationale is the same as we've been discussing for all capital projects. There's an immediate, clear need now. This cannot be avoided. This is a flagship building, it's a long-term asset. Jay Nardone and Chris and the EFPBC have engaged a top-flight engineering firm, a forensic engineering firm, to investigate what the problem is. We believe this is a wise use of free cash, and it's a reason that we maintain free cash reserves because this snuck up on us. We also would note that this is not yet designed, and this is what we would think of as a project configuration phase. So still looking at what the project might be, and this is very important to get this right now. So what needs to be done? What's the best way to do it? And then we price that. So we recommend favorable action.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the school committee, my apologies, I didn't take you. With elected officials. Chair, Mr. Tom Hofcroft.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The school committee voted unanimously favorable action on this warrant. Thank you.
Thank you. Any town meeting members had any questions or comments on this article?
Madam Moderator, Eric Shedyak, Precinct 1. My question is this, is was any of this discovered when the building was rehabbed? And if so, is there someone we can go back and point the finger to, and maybe they can help pay for the cost?
To the EFPBC, could you please provide town meeting information about how was this essentially not discovered during the rehabilitation of the school? And if it should have been?
Thank you, Mr. Shedyak. Let me just very quickly advance to an image. So first of all, a couple of things. There was no indication of any deterioration when we were evaluating the structure of the building, topside or in the crawl space. It makes me feel old, because I am one of, I think, many of you who think of this as a new building. The MSBA approved the preferred schematic for this project. This is after they made us look at putting a building on top of Mount Pisgah, and in the town forest, and on Wrightlock Farm, and every other place, the MSBA said we had to look. We did a year and a half worth of work to figure out where else we could build a high school. And after all that, we submitted this idea. The MSBA approved this project in May of 2013. So this structure was being evaluated, soup to nuts, almost 12 years ago. I wanted to bring up this image because I think it's helpful. Clearly, this damage didn't happen yesterday, and nobody believes that it does. But it is entirely possible, and I'll go to the next one, this is an adjacent beam, this concrete could have fallen four years ago. The cracks might have appeared seven or eight years ago. The issue is, the structure was being evaluated 12 years ago. So nothing appeared to the team, certainly the EFPBC was not aware, and we had an OPM on the project, in addition to construction managers, as you may recall. This is an, I wanted to bring this image up also for another reason, and Mr. Nardone, I appreciate, made this point to me earlier today. You'll see these threaded rods that we've got connected to the concrete. These are associated with the new building. There's no cracking where the rods are going into the concrete. The rods hold Unistrut, which then hold piping on the building. We can say with certainty, no contractor would have actually placed the rods and hung the Unistrut and brought the piping in, seeing, you know, deterioration like this. It's one of the truisms in the industry, once a trade places their work onto, or in any way relying on the work of others, they sort of own that from a liability point of view, and they throw a yellow flag. So it's a long answer to your question, that the structure was thoroughly evaluated. We saw nothing. In addition to this, and I really went into the Wayback Machine to pull this up, the EFPBC did actually approve, as part of change orders, some additional waterproofing topside in the building. We also added some piping in every single wing, well, five wings of the building, all five wings, some ejector pits and pumps, so that we could continue to pump groundwater if it collected. And DPW has confirmed for me this week, the pumps work, they're checked every month, and they also have alarms if the pumps fail. So a lot of effort went into sort of mitigating the risk, to the extent water has anything to do with it. And we did look at the building very carefully. But as I said, if SGH, in their next phase of work, should you approve Article 12, if we find something that suggests any culpability, we will act on it with management and town council, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Marilyn Gagelas, Precinct 1, and I actually had the same question, but I might just ask if this is something, if the evaluations by engineers had done so much earlier than the project, before the project has begun, something like this, we all knew it was an old building, and it, I would have expected that engineering would find something, but seeing that it was 12 years, that's understandable. But is there never a check, or maybe this is, maybe this is something to think about, having the engineering done so far in advance before the building is complete? Maybe there should be a midway check, especially on buildings where you're adding new to old. I've lived through a renovation of the library that I worked for, and we had to do old and new building. And it took a lot of different engineers, engineers and engineering discussions further into the project than just a beginning one. So it might just be a suggestion at this point for future.
Thank you for that. Further on the question?
Ben Albionni, Precinct 7. Just saying this at the beginning, I'm going to vote for this because it's something that needs to be done. I'm just wondering if, were there core samples that were done in the testing beforehand?
Not that we're aware of, and I'm glad you asked that question, because there are really two different ways.
Oh, I apologize. Madam Moderator, through you.
Oh, not you. No, no, no. Mr. Nixon was the one who was out of order.
Through the moderator. It's my bad.
Go ahead.
As we understand it, there's primarily two ways to discover that you've got the problem. One is, there's deterioration and you see it, and that's what we never want to have happen. The other is, you can take concrete samples and you can test them in the lab. The observation I would make is that, we just did summer testing, as I mentioned a moment ago. SGH took a few samples throughout this building, and they tested fine in the lab. They looked fine, and they tested fine. So if we roll the clock back, you know, let's say 12 years ago, and there's nothing in this building that raises an alarm, we could have gone and done core samples, and in my opinion, could have just as easily grabbed the samples that go to the lab that say you don't have a problem. So it's a little bit, it's a little bit like playing roulette, right, about what you hit. But I have been dwelling on, you know, that very question. I mean, how many samples do you take? You can only take so many before you turn the structure into Swiss cheese. I would make the observation, if I may, Madam Moderator, just to the prior comment. We have in Winchester today reinforced concrete structures that are older than this building, and they show no deterioration. So there's not necessarily anything flawed about that approach. Every structure has a risk. If it's stick-built, you could get termites. I mean, everything sort of has a risk. The committee, gosh, worked so hard with so many consultants in evaluating this building 12 years ago. So no doubt, it's unfortunate, and I appreciate that the member will vote in support. I will be voting in support. And we just look forward to being able to bring back a tight scope of work with a number, perhaps as early as Springtown meeting, and have some conviction about how we're going to fix it, and that it's going to last a long time.
Just as a follow-up through Madam Moderator, I just wish that when we had done the initial testing, that there might have been some core samples. That's all. We need to fix the properties that we have that are our assets. Obviously, we need to fix them. I just would like maybe more of a thorough investigation beforehand. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for that feedback. Seeing no other town meeting members rise, I believe you are ready for the question. We will move to the voter. Is a majority vote required? A vote in the affirmative means that you would like to appropriate $100,000 from our free cash to support engineering services for the repair and remediation of the Winchester High School. A vote in the negative means that you are not interested in appropriating money towards the repairs, engineering required for the repairs of the Winchester High School. A majority vote is required on this one. Once again, if your vote is not registered correctly, please rise and let me know, so we can get it properly registered. Thank you. There are 154 voted, all in the affirmative. The motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Article 14, this is coming to you by the school committee. It is moved in second to accept the local acceptance provisions of the fourth paragraph of Mass. General Lodge, Chapter 40, subsection 3, such that the statute will apply to the Winchester public schools as follows. "The monies received from each, from such rental or lease shall be kept separate and apart from other town funds in the town treasury, and may be expended by the school committee without further appropriation for the upkeep of the facility so rented or surplus space which is so rented. And any such balance shall remain in said account and may be expended for the upkeep and maintenance of any facility under the control of the school committee." On behalf of the school committee is their chair, Mr. Hofcroft.
Good evening, Madam Moderator. Town meeting. Article 14 seeks town meeting approval for the local acceptance provision regarding rental funds from school buildings. You can see the motion up here, and the operative language is highlighted in blue at the end, which I'll get into in just a moment. So, let's start with how things currently work. School facilities are rented to various outside groups for programs and activities, such as Kidsborough for the before and after-school care, the Winchester School for Chinese Culture, kids-to-prose summer STEM camp, and others. Rental funds are currently deposited into a separate school building rental account, from which they are used for, they're used by the school department for maintenance and repair of the school buildings. The majority of labor expenditures are applied directly to DPW custodial overtime, plus the cost of any supplies or equipment. So examples here include replacement of seats in the McCall Auditorium, or painting the Lincoln Gym while the floor was being replaced due to water damage, or replacement of the motors that raise and lower the basketball nets here in the high school. So adoption of Article 14 will basically allow funds to be used equitably across all buildings based on the need, rather than on the location where the rental revenue is derived. And it'll also codify our current practice of carrying forward the year-end balance in the school building rental account to perform significant repairs over the summer when the students are outside of the building. So we ask for your support on Article 14. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May we have a recommendation from the select board?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The select board unanimously voted favorable action on this article.
Thank you very much. May we have a recommendation from the finance committee?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator. FinCom voted favorable action. Eleven members voting for and one member voting unfavorable action. The rationale is, we, I did not repeat it in the slide, Mr. Hofcroft gave it. The rationale against the motion is that the annual amount of rentals is about $382,000 a year. The effect of the article is to sweep this money out of free cash, which is okay, but we might need free cash to respond to the capital crisis. One of the thoughts in FinCom, which I'm just sharing with you for your information, is that this money might be moved to the DPW maintenance, that there's an account called Buildings Repair and Maintenance, the object code is on the screen. But the idea, that thought by a member of FinCom would be that if this money were going to be swept anywhere, it should be swept into the DPW Buildings REM Fund. So those are the comments, but we did vote, we did vote this Article 11 to 1 favorable action. Thank you.
Thank you. Any town meeting members with any questions or comments? Seeing no one rise, I believe you are ready for the vote. The vote requires a majority. We will be going to our clickers. Actually, you know what? Let's try voice vote, it's unanimous. We'll take it. If not, we'll go to our clickers. All those in favor of? All those opposed? The ayes have it unanimously, and the motion is passed. Moving on to Article 17. Back to the select board we go. Article 17 is on page 23 of your Fall Annual Town Meeting Motion and Background booklet. It is moved in second to accept the town vote to appropriate $50,000 from fiscal year 24 miscellaneous non-recurring revenue to make improvements at Davidson Park and Washington Street Park. This is being brought to you by the select board, as we're now in the groupings of all the articles coming to you from that body. A majority vote is required. On behalf of the select board is Mr. Bettencourt.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Town meeting, as many of you may have noticed, we've had a lot of construction on Cross Street and in and around town. And the way that we've been working this with Eversource is to have payments for any time they're using town property for lay-down areas, for construction, for parking. This is one of those items, and it's really to mitigate the damages. So it's $50,000 that will be used for improvements, whether they be park benches or plantings at Davidson or Washington Park. And we are working with the neighborhood to have a decision-making process involved for that. So when we have funds that come in from Eversource, they have to be transferred into a separate fund for us to be able to appropriate them. Otherwise, they just revert to free cash, and we want the money that stays in, to stay in the neighborhood and the area where it's been impacted. Thank you.
Thank you to the select board. May we have a recommendation from the finance committee?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I don't think we have a slide on this, but Matt, could you help me find it? Okay, yeah. But we did vote unanimously favorable action on this, on this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from town meeting members? Seeing no one rise, I believe you are ready for the vote. A majority vote is required. We'll try a voice vote first. If not, we'll go to our clickers. All those in favor of Article 17's motion to appropriate $50,000 from the fiscal year 24 miscellaneous non-recurring revenue for Davidson Park and Washington Street Park? All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it unanimously, and the motion is passed. Moving on to Article 18. Town meeting members, there was an amendment to this motion that you received in your email. There's also versions of it. There's also versions of it out at the Clerk's Office. And it's just a simple modification that was voted in by the Select Board on October 30th, 2023. And it is that $3,500,000, not $3,100,000. So I will be reading it in since you received the modification before seven days. It is moved and seconded that $3,500,000 is appropriated to pay costs of engineering acquisition and installation of solar panels and solar panel canopies on or in the vicinity of the Lynch Elementary School and the school's parking lots, including the payment of all costs incidental related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, $300,000 shall be transferred from free cash and the treasurer, with approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow $2,800,000 pursuant to General Law Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. There's an issue with the... So actually, that's incorrect. It's not just the $3,100,000 that was changed to $3,500,000. It's also the authorized to borrow $3,200,000 versus $2,800,000. So let me begin again and reread it correctly. It is moved and seconded that $3,500,000 is appropriated to pay costs of engineering acquisition and installation of solar panels and solar panel canopies on or in the vicinity of the Lynch Elementary School and the school's parking lots, including the payment of all costs incidental related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, $300,000 shall be transferred from free cash and the treasurer, with approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow $3,200,000 pursuant to General Law Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes to the town therefore. That the town manager shall be authorized to have oversight of the project and in accordance with section 4-2 of the Town of Winchester Home Rule Charter, the town manager shall have the authority to enter into contracts and approve payments with respect to the project. This requires a two-thirds vote of the meeting. On behalf of the Select Board, Ms. Michelle Pryor.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, everybody. So, wanted to show you, as you all have heard about the one... Hold on a second. There we go. Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Sam. Okay. So behind you is a fetching picture of the new Lynch School. Consistent with the Select Board's recommendation in March, we are encouraging the use of solar photovoltaic production to achieve net-zero energy status in Lynch School and most of our new buildings. To achieve this, there are going to be three separate solar arrays at Lynch. One on the third-floor classroom, which is already part of the core design, more to be installed on the building's roof, and ground-mounted solar canopy. So looking at the picture, the parking, so parking canopies to cover the cars are on the far left, that's where staff parking will be, and the solar panels on the roof are the areas outlined in red. The design of this building is what MSBA approved and the core budget does not include the cost for those additional canopies on the roof and over the parking. Because at the time we put this through to MSBA, I think it was assumed that the town would enter into a power purchase agreement to lease the solar panels from a third-party vendor, similar to what was done at VO and W H S. However, in the core budget, there is $800,000 to ensure the structural capacity of the roof to actually bear the load of those solar panels. And as I mentioned, there is a solar array on the third-floor classroom. There's additional work to be done to get the site ready for any type of solar, which is some work in the, for parking canopy bases, drainage and conduits. That's estimated at $500,000. As we just mentioned with the revised motion, the original estimate that we had, which was in your motion book, had a full estimated cost of 3.1 million. Upon the completion of 100% construction design documents, whoops, geez, this is sensitive, that revised estimate was 3.5 million. A little bit later in the presentation, you'll see a cost-benefit slide. So what was communicated to you as read by the moderator is 3.5 million, of which we're proposing to use $300,000 in free cash and borrowing the rest. Additionally, the memo that you received dated October 31st said that we expected bids to come in from construction bidders on November 17th. As of last week, that deadline is now pushed to November 30th. So why is that important? We don't know the actual costs and we won't know the actual costs before we finish Town Meeting. We won't know until the end of the month. But we're going to go with what we have and explain what we still see as the benefits of owning the panels versus leasing the panels. So what's changed? The Inflation Reduction Act of 2022 made federal investment tax credits available to municipalities if the solar arrays are owned and operated by the town. Previously, those credits were only available, were not available to tax-exempt entities. So the PPA provider could claim it, homeowners could claim it, taxpayers could get federal incentives. But as of 2022, the town can now get in that game. So as the Chair of another committee said when I presented on this, so the federal government's going to pay the town government. Yes, they will, and I don't make the rules, but I'm more than happy to get the money. The town hired an independent third-party consultant to work with us on estimates. She's available tonight if we need some additional questions that go beyond my knowledge. We can be in a subcommittee, which had members of the Select Board, EFPBC, School Committee, the Town Project Manager, the Town Sustainability Director, and an observer from the Finance Committee to look at the estimates, the assumptions, the timing of the bids. We've met at least a half a dozen times since June to look at the ongoing sort of changes in cost, changes in estimates, potentially options on how to get the drainage built and all those types of things. So it wasn't just Select Board, it was a bunch of us. And as I said on our last call last week, I'll miss them all when we don't meet as often as we do. So that's what's different for us. We have a chance to actually receive the benefit of that tax credit. And I'll show you exactly how much that is. So why buy versus lease? We've always leased thus far. By owning and operating, the town gets the tax credit, which is 30% of the cost of the panels, or roughly $800,000 to offset the cost of installing those panels. We avoid paying energy that we would otherwise need to purchase back from a PPA provider. And we receive a discount on any excess energy, which if we have a sunny July and August, we would actually think we would generate more through solar than we would normally, in normal use. Fewer kids in the school, potentially smaller, you know, fewer programs, excess energy, we get a credit in our tax bill. It's an opportunity to actually invest capital dollars to offset our operating budget. And I think for anyone at Town Meeting that doesn't, isn't aware of this, energy comes out of the municipal budget. All of the school's energy is paid for on the municipal side. So right now, the tax bill, I'm sorry, the energy bill for the lights and the heat comes out of municipal. If we have solar and it pays for itself in seven to eight years, we basically get nearly free energy from our own building versus leasing our roof to a third-party and buying back the energy that our own building generates. And in borrowing, it's fixed debt spread over a finite term of borrowing, which presents a predictable cost against what could be a very volatile cost of other energy. So if we leased it and energy costs went up, we're paying more. If we pay down the debt at a fixed rate, once it's paid for itself, the energy is ours. It's no longer volatile. It's predictable. So leasing presents a higher upfront, no upfront cost and discounted power. Ownership is a larger upfront cost, but a bigger year-over-year impact. Predictability from our perspective equates to lower risk for the town on its operating pressures and its energy budget. So investing a modest amount of free cash now and borrowing the balance will allow us to avoid energy costs for at least 25 years, if not more. It makes financial sense and it's a hedge against what could be volatile future energy costs. And if the estimated cost of the solar panel is less than 3.5 million, and some indications might be, the amount borrowed will be reduced. So Thursday night, we talked about articles coming in and borrowing authorizations needed to be adjusted because we hadn't asked for enough. So Articles 7 and 8 had borrowing adjustments going up. Article 21 in your consent agenda, which we just voted in block, actually gave back $750,000 in borrowing authorization that we didn't need. So if we don't need $3.2 million, we won't borrow $3.2 million. But again, we won't know until November 30th. And we're not going to ask everybody to come back on December 1st to get those numbers. So how do our current solar panels do? So behind me are production for the first two years of operation for VO, DPW and the high school. VO and DPW are exceeding estimates by 11%, 7% and the high school is slightly below production estimates. What does that mean? Maybe our estimates were right. What is, maybe our production is, you know, it's particularly sunny at VO. But what we've seen is that generally, solar panels do at least as well as we would predict. We have experience in doing so. They produce right now excess energy in two out of three buildings. So if that were to happen at Lynch, any excess energy that the building doesn't need actually gets credited to a future energy bill. We actually get an offset on the next month's bill. So this year, with a rainy July, who knows? But this is where we were for the first two years of measuring. Here is an economic summary prepared by Beacon Integrated Solutions. Couple of items to note. We would plan to finance this two years with short-term bands and then bond for 13 years, so 15 years of borrowing. You have $3.2 million, which assumes in the first column, with a 3.2 at the top, assumes $300,000 of use in free cash to lower the borrowing. However, we could also borrow the full amount. The investment tax credit is the $892,000, or 30% of the cost of the panels. There is some construction capital and upfront costs, either doing the groundwork if we had a PPA or putting our free cash in. And the net benefits are higher for ownership than for leasing. So our consultant did do a net present value calculation, and so you'll see they're red on the PPA side, which is the far right. They're also red on the ownership side. It's difficult to estimate what future cash flow will be when you're cost-avoiding energy. We're not getting payments back from Eversource or our energy provider. We're just paying less over time. So you'll see there's operations and maintenance that we will likely outsource to a third-party. We don't anticipate adding this to DPW's workload. We will likely outsource that. There's insurance costs that are also baked into our costs. But we still see estimated benefit in the hundreds of thousands of dollars by owning versus leasing. So the last thing, this is where, if it builds for us, Matt, we'll see, right? So we recommend favorable action on direct purchasing in Article 18. We'll achieve our net-zero building. We'll achieve a net-zero building whether we lease or we buy. Try that again. The borrowing is paid through our operating budget. This is important to note. This is not a debt exclusion vote that we're asking for. There'll be no associated tax increase. We're not using the capital stabilization fund. We're asking to use a modest amount of free cash to lower the amount that we borrow and our free cash currently stands at $20 million. And we see the benefit with predictable debt payments and reduced annual energy expenses. It's an asset that will pay for itself, that we'll get a benefit of versus the third-party. So we recommend and certainly encourage you favorable action on our article. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. May we have a recommendation from the school committee?
Madam Moderator, Town Meeting members, the school committee voted unanimously favorable action on this warrant. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. FinCom recommends favorable action on Article 18, which we describe as the town purchase of the solar panels. As our custom, we try to give the rationale for and some of the rationale against. The rationale for is that FinCom's majority preferred Option 18 vis a vis Option 19. The logic behind that is a reduction in the long-term O and M costs. And the Select Board member, Michelle Pryor, makes the case very well. She made that case very well to Finance Committee. We also think that one of the things that we need to spend a little more time focusing on is the long-term costs that follow construction, the long-term operation and maintenance costs, which is, as I mentioned a couple meetings ago, is 87% of the cost of owning a building is what you spend after you get it, when you first construct it. So this is an effort to focus on the long-term operations costs and we commend the attention on that issue, which we think is consistent with the charter. The rationale against 18 expressed by some of our members is that approximately $2 million and as I think Ms. Pryor would recognize, it's $2 million plus or minus, you know, and we don't really know the exact answer yet. But that money could be used to, on other, for other purposes, to address the capital crisis. We could preserve more borrowing capacity and some, from free cash. It might allow for earlier starts of other projects. And if we're looking at a sizable override in the next year, it might reduce the value of that override. But overall, the Finance Committee is in support. 11 in favor, 1, sorry, 2 opposed.
Thank you. May we have a recommendation from the EFPBC?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The EFPBC recommends favorable action on Article 18 to support direct purchase. And I want to thank the moderator, who's also agreed to give me a little time to tell you that we also recommend tonight favorable action on 19 because they're related to the same endgame, which is net zero. And I appreciate, Madam Moderator, has allowed me to just take a moment to explain to you why that is. The EFPBC, to put a finer point on it, we're not recommending favorable action on 18 or 19. We're recommending a vote yes on both. And the rationale is this. Article 18, that obviously we're talking about now, does not obligate the Select Board to do anything. It's a borrowing authorization should they choose to move forward with direct ownership. Similarly, Article 19 obligates the board in no way. It's an authorization for them to enter into a contract up to 30 years. Want to make the observation that a month ago, when the board first voted on direct ownership, they were in favor four to one, based on cost estimates that came from 90% drawings. And that's how the warrant was printed and it's the reason why there's been an update that Ms. Pryor shared with you. Two weeks ago, cost estimates came in and the cost was a little higher. The board still supports direct ownership, though this time by a three to two vote. The board had some very meaningful lengthy conversation. And analyzing those numbers, you can appreciate the more expensive the project, the further you go out with red ink before the ink turns black. They've done a great job of this. While there are many people, individuals, who have been working with that task force since the spring to help evaluate this, no public body has spent more time discussing this issue and evaluating this question than the Select Board. Their consultant, Beth Greenblatt, has done a tremendous job in their many meetings. You may have read about him in the newspaper. And so there's great confidence that the EFPBC has in the Select Board in making the decision they feel is really in the best interest of the town. So that brings me back to my comment that I made under Article 1 and the comment Ms. Pryor just said a moment ago about schedule. This is a dynamic process. I shared with you last week under Article 1 that G C bids were going to come in on the 27th. And well, guess what? We got requests to extend the bid date. I don't want to force a general contractor to give me a number they're not prepared for. We want contractors to be sure their numbers are good and we don't want them padding their numbers. So the EFPBC voted last week on Wednesday to extend the bid date until the 30th. That's a reflection of how competitive the climate is. As hard as the Select Board has been working on these numbers, they're based on estimates, the numbers that really matter are the bids. And we don't have them yet, but they're coming very soon. So the recommendation from the EFPBC is to vote yes on 18 and 19, show trust in the Select Board to make the decision that's in the best interest of the town when those bids come in. The hope, of course, is that when the bids are open, they are at or below the numbers that Ms. Pryor just provided. If those numbers should come in higher, and there's always a chance that that can happen, there's always a chance. If Town Meeting has not authorized Article 19, then we've sort of cut off that second path towards net zero and we postpone that conversation until the spring. So I think the Select Board has done an amazing job. Hope you vote yes on 18 and 19. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we've heard from all the boards and committees who wanted to give recommendations to Town Meeting on this article. Any questions or comments from Town Meeting members?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm going to wear two hats. My name is Josh Behrs.
Can you please provide your name for the record?
Yes, Josh Behrs. My first hat is as a member of the Climate Action Advisory Committee. And my second hat is as a Town Meeting member, Precinct 7.
Thank you.
So with my first hat on, just wanted to say that the Climate Action Advisory Committee had a unanimous vote in support of solar had a unanimous vote in support of solar panels on Lynch. And it's really consistent with goal number one of the town's climate action plan, 2020 Climate Action Plan, which is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by the town by 80% by the year 2050. And just to give some numbers to what the Lynch projected greenhouse gas reduction would be, would be about 532 metric tons of carbon dioxide averted by having those and achieving net zero for the school. The second benefit that we see is an educational one. It's on a school, great place for kids to learn about solar energy. My daughter, who's a third grader at Lynch, did a science project last year about the solar panels that we have on our garage roof. So I think there's great opportunities for education. And finally, leading by example, this is a municipal building. Our greenhouse emissions sadly by the municipal is only about less than 4% of, with the town emits, but a great place to start and set an example for residents as well. So, yep, that's, thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you very much. My apologies to the Climate Action Committee. Your moderator was uninformed that you were going to give a recommendation, but thank you for sharing your voice. Further on the question?
Yeah, Peter Scheimetz, Precinct 5. Just a quick question. Is this, this project is not eligible for smart funds?
To the Slack board, is this project eligible for smart funds?
Yes, it is, Peter, and I forgot to make that note. It is. It's on the chart. It is eligible for smart funds, which is Solar Massachusetts something program. Yes. So and the deadline to get approved for that is December 31st of this year. So time is of the essence to apply. As the owner, we would get those smart payments, and yes, it is both federal tax credit and smart program eligible. I forgot to say that. Thank you.
So just to follow up for the town, that means you get paid for production. You defer your energy costs, and then you get paid for what you produce. So you get another 11 cents, so it's half of, half of the price of the electricity is what you get.
Thank you.
The smart is smart. All right. Seeing no other Town Meeting members rise, I believe we are ready for the vote. It is a two-thirds vote, and it is to authorize appropriate, it is appropriate money. So at this point, I'm just going to use our clickers real quick. We might as well check to also make sure they work and to make sure we get that fully documented vote in place. A vote in affirmative means that you would like to appropriate money for the acquisition of the solar panels at Lynch Elementary School. A vote no means that you would not like to appropriate money for acquisition of the solar panels at Lynch Elementary School. Two-thirds vote required. As a reminder, this is a borrowing. Part of it is used for free cash, the other part is for borrowing. Any Town Meeting members with issues with their voting? Seeing no one rise. There are 140, 151 members voting, 101 required for adoption. There are 147 in affirmative, four in the negative, and the motion has passed. So your moderator's been informed that the FinCom would like to convene and discuss Article 18 before, well, sorry, Article 19 before we take it up. And it's almost 8 o'clock, so I'm actually going to let us break, so they can do that during our break and not hold up our meeting. We're going to take 15 minutes. You are welcome to stand around the FinCom if you want to hear them debate Article 19. Otherwise, please go visit the Girl Scouts and enjoy stretching your legs. Thank you.
Yes. I got Peter Scheimetz to send me his stuff too, so I got to get back to me.
Good evening, everybody. Alan Idin here at the Winchester High School with WindCam's continuing coverage of Winchester's fall Town Meeting here on session number three. Let's recap. The Town Meeting is in recess for 15 minutes, so let's recap what we've so far this evening. The meeting was opened with some comments from the moderator, reflecting on issues that came up at the last meeting. And she commented on the need for civility, the importance of this legislative branch of the town government, and said she was here to encourage civil participation. Some editorial comments from the moderator. Town Meeting then moved on to Article 11, which was to appropriate $155,000 to purchase a small piece of land, a small but critical piece of land on Waterfield Road. There was extensive research over the time that this was partially owned by Pan Am Railways or the MBTA. It was finally determined that the MBTA owned this parcel. It's actually the entrance to the Waterfield, currently the Waterfield lot, parking lot there, next to the building on Waterfield Road. Obviously necessary for the town to move forward with the anticipated redevelopment of that lot. That, again, was $155,000. Town Meeting appropriated that. Article 12, the Town Meeting was informed of some of the structural issues and some problems with the Winchester High School that have developed in the sections of the building that are from the original 1970 construction. If you may recall, that when the town redeveloped this building here, it kept the structure, it was basically a gut job of the structure that was built in 1970. And some of those, some of those areas are developing some problems with the concrete and the rebar. And we saw pictures of some of the crawl spaces put forward by EFPBC Chair Christopher Nixon, and said these issues seem to be accelerating, that some of the rebar, concrete reinforcing, is coming through to the surfaces. So this $100,000 was not for the repairs, which may be somewhat expensive, but for the engineering studies to find out exactly what repairs are needed and what the best procedure to move forward. Town Meeting passed that. Article 14 is to accept, was to accept part of the Mass General laws that allows that rental income generated on unused or not in active use areas of the schools can be spent, can be put in a special account and be spent without further action for the upkeep and maintenance of any school property when determined by the school committee. That was passed. Article 17 was for improvements to the Davidson and Washington Street parks. Apparently, though, the town had agreed to let Eversource use those, some of those areas for lay-down areas during their construction on Cross Street. In return, Eversource has paid $50,000, and this was to utilize those funds for improvements and work at those two parks on Cross Street. That was passed. Article 18, which we were just discussing, was for a proposal for solar panels for the new Lynch School. The appropriation is approximate, an estimate of $3.5 million. As we heard, the, this is an estimate, because the bids have not come in, they will not be in until the end of the month. We heard that this is Lynch, the new Lynch will be an all-electric building. The town is striving for net zero energy use for the school, net zero energy for the school. This work would include also, not only the panels, but the structural issues to support and utilize the panels, such as reinforcing and the actual conduits and supporting materials for panels. We heard from Michelle Pryor that federal incentives are only available for owned, but not leased, panels, and that will amount to about $800,000 in this case. She also said that excess energy generated in the summer not being used can be credited against future energy bills for the town, not just for this school. She said and aside that two out of the three current solar panels on Town Meeting, on Town Buildings are producing excess energy at this point. With that, the Town Meeting overwhelmingly approved this project. Now, Article 19, which will be coming up next, is also a backup article to this that allows, in case the bids come in substantially over that $3.5 million, that allows the select board to enter into a power purchase agreement, basically leasing panels, should the bids have come in more than is authorized. The finance committee asked for a recess at this time so they could discuss their position on Article 19, and the moderator has granted that. So here we are. This is the third session of Town Meeting for Fall 2023. It's in recess at the moment, and we will be back with our continuing coverage of this Town Meeting when it resumes in just a few minutes. Stay with us, and I'll also be back with a recap at the end of the meeting.
We need volunteers. In order to keep up the level of sports coverage WindCam currently provides, we are in need of additional support. What does WindCam cover? WindCam broadcasts Winchester High School volleyball, football, basketball, hockey, and more. These games stream live on our website, as well as on our cable channels. All games are then uploaded to YouTube for replay. If you're interested in sports broadcasting, camera operation, commentating, and more, email us at windcam@windcam.org to see how you can get involved.
residents. Introduction to Video Editing in Adobe Premiere Pro is an intensive five-session, one-on-one, or small-group course designed to provide a solid foundation in post-production. From file organization to color grading, we'll provide a comprehensive overview of the program, which has become the industry standard for video editing. Participants will learn by doing and leave having edited a polished scene. Premiere Pro is one of the top editing programs used by professionals, and since it's part of the Adobe Creative Cloud, Premiere integrates seamlessly with other industry-standard programs such as After Effects for visual effects and Audition for audio mixing and editing. WindCam will soon offer courses in other software programs so students can get an education that elsewhere would cost thousands of dollars. Our class is ideal for students interested in pursuing media as a career, adults looking to broaden their skill set, or anyone who is passionate about content creation and the visual arts. This class will be taught onsite at WindCam by our training and outreach coordinator, Kayla Avitabale.
Hi, I'm Kayla, and I'm excited to use my experience in video editing to help people in town learn these skills and bolster their media toolset. To learn more about how to sign up and course logistics, scan the QR code or visit windcam.org/adobe.
This course is offered year-round at $325 for all five sessions. Scholarships are also available for those in need of financial assistance. Finally, a year of membership to WindCam is included in the price of the course, giving you access to our state-of-the-art facilities and equipment.
We hope to see you here for this course. Soon, you'll be making videos just like this one.
WindCam is more like the public library. It's a resource for folks who live or work in Winchester. But instead of loaning out books or those types of resources, we're loaning out cameras. People see us at government meetings, like a Town Meeting or Select Board Meeting, and they think that's sort of WindCam's role, but there's really a lot more to what we're covering and what we're documenting. For example, the high school sports that we cover. There's all kinds of community events that we not only document, but we normally will carry live, and we're actually archiving all of those too. So the town's history is actually being recorded. In addition, WindCam is a great place to pick up some professional production skills at a reduced price. People are often really surprised when they come down and visit us for the first time. They're amazed at the facility itself and the resources that we're able to offer to residents. People are always like, I can't believe I didn't know this was here. Well, access to media shouldn't be limited to those who can pay the high price, right? So that's what community media is all about. You should be able to come in and learn how to create your own media, and you should be able to turn on your television or your computer and access local information and entertainment. That's what WindCam does really well. That's what we're all about. That's the mission. And that's what public access in its core was set up to do from the very beginning. was set up to do from the very beginning.
All right, Town Meeting, let's start getting to our seats so we can resume.
So we're on Article 19, though, right? So we don't need, I need to keep that for FinCom. She's a PowerPoint, right there. Now, that's actually kind of working better. I'm getting a rhythm with that, I like that better.
All right, second call, please take your seats. I brought the gavel, just in case. All right, let's get going. So we are moving onward to Article 19. Thank you so much for breaking a few minutes early so that FinCom could debate. Article 19 is on page 25 of your Fall Town Meeting motion and background booklet. It is moved and seconded at the Town vote to authorize the Select Board to enter into a power purchase agreement for a period of up to 30 years for the purchase of the solar energy generated by a facility to be constructed upon or around the Lynch Elementary School located at 10 Brantwood Road in Winchester, Massachusetts. On behalf of this article, it's being sponsored by the Select Board, we have Mrs. Pryor.
Hi, I'm back. Still solar. Parking is on the left, the roof is in the middle. So Article 19 authorizes the Select Board to enter into a lease with a third-party PPA, so power purchase agreement, PPA, lease with a vendor, the duration of which needs to be negotiated, but it's typically 20 or 25 years. In such a lease, like we have at VO and the high school, the vendor agrees to sell electricity to the town at a discounted rate, maybe 15% below market rate. Again, that's negotiated for the duration of the agreement. So we sign a lease for 20 or 25 years, that's kind of industry standard, 15% below the market rate is what we think we're getting, what we're getting now in our other solar arrays. The vendor purchases and installs the panels on the roof and the parking lot canopies and connects the infrastructure that the building that our Lynch project has already created, so they have to tap into what's there underground, all the electrical work that's laid out for them. It's important to note, the town will still own the array on the third floor classroom, we talked about that in Article 18, that there's part of a solar array as core to the Lynch project. And a PPA, the vendor gets the federal investment tax credit, not the town, but the vendor gets the smart, like Peter mentioned. The vendor maintains and operates the panels, and while there are some changes, electricity transmission charges could be passed on to the town, but the discount remains. So there's a little bit of volatility potentially in those energy charges as costs are passed through to the PPA vendor, they pass it back to the town. So, why should we give you Article 19? It gives us the flexibility to enter into a long-term lease if it makes financial sense. We haven't had, we don't have the details yet, as Mr. Nixon said. If we somehow find that our $3.5 million estimate is understated or grossly below, I think we would look at negotiating a PPA or seeing what kind of rates, what kind of terms we can get with a PPA provider. But we won't know those costs until November 30th. Article 19, a favorable vote on 19 gives us the flexibility to do a lease if need be, but it's our preference, and it sounds like it's your preference, to own the solar panels outright. So, thank you for considering Article 19, and those are all my slides. I think I said it all before. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. May we have a recommendation for the school committee?
School Committee recommends favorable action for the reasons stated.
Thank you. May we have a recommendation from FinCom?
Thank you, and thank you, thank you, Madam Moderator, thank you for the patience. We had voted favorable action on Article 19, but we had understood them to be in the alternative. So we voted favorable action 12 to zero a week or so ago, but it was on the assumption that Article, if Article 18 was not approved by Town Meeting. So the reason we, then the rationale is the same as we discussed before, to save, save the money, if we do a PP, PPA, then we have, we have, we're saving that two plus, two plus or minus million dollars for other things. What we did not vote until just three minutes ago was what would happen if, what is FinCom's position on giving Select Board the authority to do either 18 or 19, and we just voted on that. The vote was seven to six in favor of proceeding with Article 19 and giving that authority to the Select Board. The arguments, the arguments against, this is a very close vote, the arguments against are that the Select Board should follow through and follow through with the ownership proposal that the Town Meeting has already voted, I don't know, I think it was almost unanimously in Article 18. And the argument against is that should conditions change, the Select Board should be entitled to make the appropriate decision and given the authority to move in either direction. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear a recommendation from the EFPBC? Kind of already touched base on this, but if you could just...
You've heard from me a lot already, so I'm not going to repeat myself, but we, obviously, we do, we support both for the reasons stated. The numbers that matter the most are the numbers that you get when you open the bids. Everybody who's been involved in this process since March has been hopeful that the bids are going to come in at or below the estimate, but there's always the chance that they don't, and we don't want to be stuck. The alternative is if the costs come in considerably higher, purchase makes, no more makes sense for the Board. We don't want to be talking about this at spring Town Meeting because we've just postponed for another six months identifying who our partner is, and there's a lot of project coordination involved. So it's just about giving them the authority should conditions warrant.
Thank you. Do the Climate Action Committee have any recommendations?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Josh Pears, Climate Action Advisory Committee. And intentionally, I didn't say we supported 18 or 19 because we support solar. Either way, we save the 550 metric tons of carbon, so.
Thank you. At this time, any Town Meeting members with questions or comments on Article 19?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Pamela Court, Precinct 5, through the moderator to Town Meeting. I support a no vote on Article 19 for the same reasons that Dr. Miller stated, that some of our FinCom members were against voting in favor of it. Having watched some of these Select Board meetings in person, I'm uncomfortable with the quality of debate. We had an almost unanimous decision supporting the purchase of these. They went from a four-to-one vote in support of purchasing to a three-to-two vote, and if the will of Town Meeting is to be honored, I personally don't feel comfortable leaving that at their discretion, so that's something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further questions or comments? Seeing no one rise, I believe you're ready for the vote. We will use our clickers. A vote in the affirmative is to authorize the Select Board to enter into a power purchase agreement. This is not binding, Town Meeting is not forcing them to do it, it gives them the option. A vote no does not provide Town Meeting the option to enter into a power purchase agreement. A simple majority is required, as this is not a borrowing, this is just to go into an agreement. I've been reminded that your vote will not register until the green light turns on, so if you hit it early, you didn't wait till the light turned green. And we will all now know. For those who have their name on the first slide, just know your moderator has her name on the last slide, so I have to wait just a little. All right, there is 125 in the affirmative, 30 in the negative. The affirmative has it, and the motion is passed. Moving on to Article 20. Article 20 is to appropriate money to supplement the opioid settlement. It is a majority vote required. It is on page 26 of your book. It is moved and seconded that the Town vote to appropriate $94,872.89 to supplement the opioid settlement article found O399172 to be spent in accordance with the Massachusetts State subdivision for statewide opioid settlement funds, funds to be used to supplement and strengthen resources available to communities and families for substance use disorder prevention, harm reduction, treatment, and recovery, and that to meet this appropriation, $75,146.14 be funded from the free cash and $19,726.75 from fiscal year 24 miscellaneous nonrecurring revenue. It's brought to you before the Select Board. On behalf of the Select Board is their vice chair, Anthea Brady.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not that tall at all. All right, so I just want to give you context for this article. This is actually the same context that I gave when I presented this at Fall Town Meeting last year. The state has updated their slides from August of 2022 to March of 2023, so I'll just give you a brief update on, on what this is. So nationwide, there is finding settlements against opioid manufacturers, distributors, and pharmacies in regards to the opioid crisis, and Massachusetts overall has received over $900 million in settlement funds, which are designed for the prevention, harm reduction, treatment, and recovery, and recovery services to be from sort of three different McKinsey, Johnson &amp; Johnson, and their distributors, and then Teva, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart. Of these 900 million, Winchester is receiving $973,311.51. We've received and appropriated from essentially money that that comes into general funds and are appropriated for this purpose, $38,000 at Fall Town Meeting of 2022. In this year, we have $113,643 from FY23 from Johnson &amp; Johnson and distributors. We also have money from FY24 of $19,726, which adds up to a total of $133,000 that we've received to date. So what, what we do with this money, it can be used, so 40% are given to municipalities and 60% go to the state. The way that the funds can be used is to supplement and strengthen resources, as I mentioned, prevention, harm reduction, treatment, and recovery. What the town has done so far, from the money that was received previously, is hosted three community mental health first aid trainings and supplies. So this is an evidence-based curriculum to give information to community members on how to be aware of and triage those who are struggling. Further trainings are planned, including a Train the Trainer course for high school staff to integrate into the phys ed curriculum at the high school. There have also been Narcan kit supplies that the Health Department purchased, so these are kits with naloxone, fentanyl test strips, a CPR face shield and gloves, and substance use disorder mental health resources that have been distributed. And then the Health Department is also working with partners in the town, the police, fire, mental health worker, the social worker, at the JENX, school staff, people with lived experience, and other regional partners for harm reduction and prevention strategies. So that's just a example of what we've done so far. I've gone too far. I've gone too far. And we ask that you support the transfer of the funds in this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Yes, Madam Moderator, thank you. We do, FINCOM voted unanimously in support of this article. I don't have a slide.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from town meeting members? So seeing no one rise, I believe we are ready for vote. If a majority vote is required, I will first take it by voice. If not, we'll go ahead to the, hey, the light's still on. We're not voting. All those in favor of appropriating money to supplement the opioid settlement, say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it unanimously, and the motion is passed. Moving on to Article 22. Article 22 is to transfer funds to Employee Healthcare Insurance Stabilization Fund. It can be found on page 28 of your booklet. It is being brought to you by the Select Board. It is moved and seconded that the town vote to appropriate $1,008,085 from free cash in Employee Healthcare and Health Insurance Stabilization Fund, established at the Spring 2022 Town Meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Subsection 5B. On behalf of the Select Board, their chair, Rich Muji.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So I'm here to talk about the Healthcare Stabilization Fund and appropriation as found in the motion. In the spring of 2022, this body created the Employee Healthcare Health Insurance Stabilization Fund and appropriated $275,000 into the fund. The current fund balance is $283,514.62. In FY23, the health insurance budget had a turnback of $1,212,230.42 due to the change in health insurance providers from Harvard Pilgrim to Maya, Blue Cross Blue Shield. As you can see, historically, we've had health insurance turnbacks dating back to FY24, I mean, excuse me, FY14. We believe at this point that creating the Healthcare Stabilization Fund is a good resource in order to help balance the budget every year. The health insurance premium number comes in late in the budget season, and we recently adopted a set of guidelines governing recommendations for these transfers. We believe the money that we're getting in turnbacks this year due to the program change is, is kind of like a one-time payment that we're going to get. We think it will be hard to make up the difference, the Select Board does, in, in future years. So we're asking for this one-time large appropriation to fund the, the, fund the stabilization fund in accordance with our, our policy. So we adopted the guidelines most recently. We commit, we committed to reviewing turnbacks from the prior year health insurance budget each fall and considering appropriation of those funds from free cash into the stabilization fund. The fund balance does not exceed 10% of the current fiscal year health insurance budget, so that's what our, our policy is. Why fund the entire 10% now? To be prepared, like I said, we're unlikely to see an opportunity to max out the fund balance in the future. The health insurance costs are variable depending on plan's performance in previous years. It would assist in budget projections, knowing that it's fully funded, may help delay an operating override at some point. The funds were always earmarked for healthcare costs anyways, so we're just keeping them earmarked for that purpose. And this is also a staff recommendation. In addition, I've heard some people who are not in favor of this state that, you know, if you look at our historical rise in healthcare costs, they, they average around 4%. Historically, yes, that's true, but there have been years where we've had 7%, 9% increases. And, you know, I think we've been lucky and we were fortunate to be able to switch plans last year to assist in savings in this area. But, you know, an increase is coming. We know it is, and this will help as we plan for budget season to know that we have these funds available for, to pay for those future increases when they hit. Because like I said, they happen, you know, typically in the February time period when we're well into budget season, and a big, a big hit like an 8%, 10% increase will significantly affect our budget planning. It could throw everything out of whack. So these funds sit, they're safeguarded, they're segregated, and they're available for that very purpose. So please help us and vote yes on Article 22.
Thank you. May we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
FINCOM voted on favorable action. 12 members voting on favorable action, one member abstained. It's not, it's not for a difference in intent or hope. Leaving this money in free cash leaves it available if it's needed in the future. We, to give you some, some of the concerns that are listed here, but, you know, we might want to save this money for, for application to the capital, to the capital crisis. It preserves $1 million in free cash. It's not going anywhere. It's still there. If there is an increase in healthcare costs, it's still there that we can grab. But to, to put it into the health, all of it at one time into the Health Stabilization Fund at once reduces the flexibility that the town has, including the Select Board has, to, to move free cash around where needed. And the last point is it might allow a, a lower capital override in the future, too. So we, we, and, you know, I, I should say, Rich, Select Board member Muji, that we appreciated you giving us an opportunity to look at the policy that you adopted. The policy is a good one. It, it calls for minimum of 5%, but not to exceed 10% of the, of the last, I think, the last year's health, healthcare cost. So we're about at 2.5%, 3%. You know, I, I think FINCOM might have reacted differently to this if, if it wasn't, if we weren't going in one year from 3% to 10%. So, but, but thank you for letting us in. You know, the policy is a good one, and we appreciate it. So we, we voted as we did, but it's just a question of where you keep flexible money. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from town meeting members?
I have some questions about this and the one, and the balance or the healthcare fund that we keep in order to try to forestall for, oh, I forget, GASP, I'm sorry. I've forgotten all the names of things. OPEP. There we go. I headed that committee, too. So why, why aren't we putting the money in there since it's, since it takes the same vote to take it out? And it can be used for healthcare funds?
To the comptroller, could you please provide us information of why the money is not going into OPEP?
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Do you want to give the full explanation of what OPEP is?
Oh, God, no. The OPEP fund is really for post-retirement benefits, so we could only use that money for retiree health insurance costs. And we're trying to shift all the retirees to a Medicare plan and not be part of the active plans where we have the negotiations annually. Hopefully, that helps. This is in addition to the OPEP fund.
Redirect, Moderator. I'm sorry, rebuttal, no. Second question.
For the question.
Second question. Here, can you just say it for me? It'll sound better. How much will it cost per year if we put all of the retirees on Medicare?
To the comptroller, can you provide town meeting how much it would cost to put all the retirees on Medicare?
Roughly, we have about 20 to 25 retirees who are never eligible for Medicare because they became employed with the town prior to April of 1986, I believe is the date. So they were never eligible. And so we're trying to shift, and the, the Select Board recently made a vote to pursue that so that we can help change the retirees from the active plan, which is more expensive and less robust. Medicare covers a lot. And so that would probably cost, I think we averaged between like 100 and 130, and that was at the max to buy these retirees in because it does come with a penalty, because these people have never contributed. However, it's a benefit, it's a win-win for both the town and the retirees because it costs less for them, costs less for us, and hopefully, they will understand. It's, it's a, it's a tough population to reach out to. A lot of the retirees have been retired for quite some time, and we're really going to help them. The HR office is going to call and contact, I believe they already have, each individual retiree that this impacts, and hopefully, we can get through to them that it's a benefit and not a detriment to them.
Thank you.
Sorry, I follow. I was looking for, yeah, I was looking for, what, what is the overall cost to the town? See, what the question I'm having is if, if we can use these funds only for retiree healthcare, if we put it in, in the OPEP budget, then what is, what is the town actually pay per year? Because it's, the money's money. It's fungible. So if we pay, so once we've got it in our budget and we pay for the, the cost of OPEP, we've also saved money that we can then use for the active employees' healthcare. So my question is, what is the town paying per year for all of the retirees?
That's a good question. I know in total, it was about 12 million last year in total, and the retirees probably make up maybe 30% of that. I'm not entirely sure. And I want to clarify, the 130,000 is the additional cost to move the retirees. It's not the full cost of their premiums. But I don't know the split off the top of my head, but the actives are more expensive currently.
Yeah. So the, this is not a question, but so the point is I would, I would move again, I would vote against this and have the money moved into OPEP because we get a, we get the advantage of, of appearing to be funding OPEP even though we're really not. And we get all of the, we get all of the, the bond, the benefits in the bond market and maintaining our AAA bond rating because we are addressing OPEP again. Not that we really are because we have this intention to be able to take it out, but as long as we're putting it in there and not taking it out, then we are beginning to fill up our unfunded mandate under OPEP.
Thank you. Further on the question?
Yes, through you, Mr., Madam Moderator. I'm intrigued by the difference between the, the Finance Committee wanting flexibility and the, and the Select Board wanting this in this dedicated fund. And obviously, this couldn't have been a new problem. We must have had to address changes in healthcare in the past, and how did we deal with it before we had this fund? Was it a problem going to Spring Town Meeting that we need this, need the money in this fund? I guess I'm just unclear over the problem we're solving.
Thank you. To the comptroller, Mrs. Ward, could you please provide town meeting information on how we addressed employee healthcare and health insurance prior to Spring 2022 funding?
In relation to setting up stabilization funds, these are savings accounts where I believe Moody's looks favorably when we put money aside to pay for future liabilities. And in this case, we already know that the healthcare costs are going to increase, so putting money aside to save for these increases really gives us the stabilization. It stabilizes our increases so that we're not using free cash for operating budgets. It's really looked frowning upon to use your free cash to balance what is an operating cost, and we should have that built into our structure. But putting money aside when we have it available, it just, it's just a better planning tool. And free cash, yes, we could always vote at the Spring Town Meeting if we didn't have enough money to, to increase the health insurance budget or to propose an increase on the yellow sheet, which is our operating budget worksheet that we use at town meeting. They're both valid options. However, the stabilization fund lets us put money aside when we have it for the specific purpose of overall health insurance costs, including retirees. Does that help?
So I, I guess, so it's more for bonding than actual impact on health insurance, right?
Well, it's not just for bonding. It's just to, to, to encourage saving money for things that we know are going to cost more money in the future. And it does, it's a reserve, basically. It's another reserve.
Further on the question?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Town meeting members, I've been on, on the, on this side, both as a member of Finance Committee and Chair, as well as being on the Select Board and Chair there. One of the issues with health insurance is that we normally don't get the premiums for what it's going to cost, the town, until around March, sometimes April. That is when the financial, the yellow sheet and all of the financial plan for Spring Town Meeting has already been done. So getting a half a million or a million dollar surprise in March or April is a problem. And in the past, the way it's been handled, if we didn't have the money at Spring Town Meeting, is by cutting benefits for employees and cutting benefits in very short period of time with very little runway. Of course, if, if costs go up 10%, two years in a row, yes, we might have to make adjustments to the plan. But what this allows is that if we get a bad surprise in April, we don't have to cut that, or we don't have to take from somewhere else at Spring Town Meeting because we have this fund that gives us a year to figure it out until the next year and until the plan. So I would, I'm going to vote yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name's Milin Trong, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4, also former, I'm still on Finance Committee, but I'm speaking as a Town Meeting Member and was a former chair. If you look at the data that Mr. Muji put up, since FY14, that'd be about nine years ago, we have turned back money every single year. That tells you that we better, we planned it really well so that we didn't need money each one of those years. We had extra money. And I trust in that planning, which has happened for nine years, to go forward, how well the town, the staff has planned going forward so that we don't need to put this million dollars aside. And it's there. It's in free cash if we need it for some reason. But I trust that, that work will go forward and we'll continue to do, to do just as well and have at least enough money, if not more than enough, like in the previous nine years. So please vote no on Article 22. Thank you.
Further on the question?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Town meeting, just wanted to affirm what Mariano had indicated to you, and I think it was back in 2018 when we were on the board, and we did get a 15% increase that year in our health insurance premiums. And getting that in March and having to figure out in a very tight budget year what to do is, is hard. And so our solution at that point was to make a plan change. We were able to, to manage that impact pretty well, but it's still, as Mariano says, that falls back on our employees and our staff. And what this stabilization fund does is it allows us to weather the storm there and to plan for the future a little bit better and to really preserve one of the premium benefits for our employees at the municipal level, which is health insurance. So with that said, I'd like to amend the main motion and move that the requested appropriation of $1,008,085 be changed to $362,285. That would be 5%. That would get us to that number, as FINCOM had indicated would be a more acceptable number. And again, to Milin's point, I think we can come back and we can add more, but having a little bit more funds in free cash is, is also beneficial to us for our planning in the, in the long term. So that would be my amendment to the motion.
Is there a second on the motion to amend?
One second.
Oh, did you get someone? Jackie Welsh, you got it. You won the lottery today. Town meeting, there is a motion before you to modify the motion from $1,008,085 from free cash down to $362,280, sorry, $362,285. To the motion maker, is that correct?
Yes. $362,285.
All right. At this time, town meeting members, actually, may we get a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Yeah, Finance Committee is unanimously in support of the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow. Any comments or questions from town meeting members on the motion to amend? We're just right now discussing the motion to amend.
Can you hear from the board? Is there a call?
Oh, I'm sorry. It was a little, if you can give us one minute to the Select Board, could you take a moment to review the motion to amend and make determination? May we hear a recommendation from the Select Board? Thank you, Mr. Nixon, for pointing that out.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Select Board voted favorable action on the motion to amend.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else rise, I'm going to take a voice vote on the motion to amend. If it's not unanimous, we'll go to our clickers. All those in favor of the motion to amend?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Any questions or comments further as we turn back to Article 22 as amended?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Dejereus, Precinct 8. I recall when this fund was passed by Town Meeting, I was against it then, and I think it's causing some confusion, at least in my mind. I'm told that this fund gives, or I'm sorry, this, let's call it a fund, whatever it is, that this gives flexibility to the Select Board. Yet the Select Board has to come to Town Meeting to actually get monies out of this. So I don't see the increased flexibility since, let's say you get these new premiums in March, you have to come to Town Meeting to release the funds in order to pay for them. So it's no different from just asking for more money from free cash. So I would vote against this because I think it just gives us more flexibility. And I don't see the point of putting it away because Town Meeting has to vote on it either way. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't hear a question there, so I'm going to go to the next speaker.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Samantha Allison, Precinct 3. I believe I was the Finance Committee Chair in 2018 when we experienced an incredibly high increase in our healthcare cost premiums. I think it was 11%, not 15, but don't quote me, Mike. Was it 11?
It was going to be 15, but we got it down to 7, according to our Town Controller.
So thank you very much. After we made changes. So I'll acknowledge my bias here. I was opposed to creating this fund last year. I'm a firm believer that we should keep as much flexibility as possible to manage our monies for the priorities of the town in the moment. So I continue to feel that way. I think that, to the points made earlier by some of the other speakers, you know, setting this aside, while I understand the intention, I agree with some of the questions around it, and I think that having flexibility and leaving in a free cash is a better option. Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question?
Madam Moderator, Dorothy Semboli, Precinct 6. I was just wondering if they could put the slide back up that shows the turnback?
Sorry, making me giggle. Yep. Get the slider.
Are you all set?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question?
Candace Van Aiken, Precinct 4. I'm opposed to this article because creating numerous pockets of money makes the budgeting process less transparent. The, I think that's the point. I'm going way back to pre the establishment of the Charter, where departments had their own budgets and their own independence. And we created the Charter to consolidate the power of all these little departments. And it seems that with the creation of these numerous funds, we're gradually breaking down that consolidation. So I'm opposed to the article.
Thank you for your comments. Seeing no other Town Meeting members rise, I believe you are ready for the vote. A two-thirds vote required. We are going to use our clickers. Don't click it till the light turns green. If you are in favor of transferring funds to Employee Healthcare Insurance Stabilization Fund as amended, which is amending the amount from $1,808,500 to $362,285, you would hit the green button for yes. If you do not want to appropriate money towards the Employee Healthcare Insurance Stabilization Fund, you would hit the no button. Requires a two-thirds vote.
Madam Moderator, I wish I examined that evidence, I realized my vote wasn't registered.
Okay, can you please tell me how you register your vote? All right, and how would you like it registered?
Yes, please.
All right, I believe all Town Meeting members' votes have been registered at this time. 154 having voted, 103 required for adoption. 92 have voted in affirmative, 60 in the negative, and the motion is lost. Moving on to Article 24, we are now next going to go into a round from the Finance Article 24 has three motions. I'm going to ask the boards and committees to review all three motions, and then we'll take them up individually for voting purposes and also for questions and comments. Article 24's goal is to transfer funds to supplement or reduce the fiscal year 24 budgets. It's sponsored by the Finance Committee. The first motion requires a two-thirds vote, and the second and third motions require a majority vote. On behalf of the proponent, we will hear from the Chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. With respect to Article 24, these are regular motions that happen every year. At Fall Town Meeting, we make adjustments to previously approved budgets in the spring to just match actuals with budgets. The first motion moves $18,270, I'm sorry, I should tell you, FinCom votes unanimously on these all the time, every year. The first motion moves $18,000 approximately from the Capital Stabilization Fund to funded debt. Second motion moves $11,000 from free cash to the DPW expense item. And the third motion moves $100,000 from free cash to the FY '24 DPW Public Works Account. The $100,000, I should explain a little bit more. The additional cost of recycling at the transfer station is the reason for that $100,000 change. And I talked to the DPW, we reviewed this with the DPW Director, these are unavoidable costs, these are adjustments that we are kind of stuck with. So these motions, as I said, each year, Stacy does all of our work for us, the comptroller sends us these three motions every year. These are routine, and we urge favorable action. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear a recommendation from the Select Board?
The Select Board unanimously voted favorable action.
Any questions or comments from Town Meeting members on motion number one, which is moved and seconded that the town transfer $18,273 from the Capital Stabilization Fund established under Chapter 69 of the Acts of 2002 to the fiscal year 24 funded debt insurance Department 7120 expenses? Seeing no one rise, we'll try voice vote. If not, we will go to our clickers. All those in favor of motion number one? Under Article 24. All those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion passes unanimously. Moving to motion two, it is moved and seconded that the town transfer $11,000 from free cash to the fiscal year 24 Veteran Services Department 5420 expenses. Any questions or comments from Town Meeting members? Seeing no one rise? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it unanimously, and the motion passes. On motion three, it is moved and seconded that the town transfer $100,000 from free cash to the fiscal year 24 Department of Public Works Department 4100. Any questions or comments? Seeing no, oh.
What was the original budget? Do you remember?
Thank you.
The original budget that we were off?
To the Finance Committee, can you please provide the original budget number that was in the original?
Well, I haven't.
Fiscal year 24. We are looking for the original budget for the Department of Public Works, line item 4100.
It's a race between Jeff Calabrese and...
To the comptroller, do you have that number? We'll take it from the comptroller. The comptroller is our winner.
Well, I don't have the salary versus expense. Thank you, Madam Moderator. The total Department of Public Works budget was in FY '24, $8,822,633. That includes salaries and expenses, so they're going to win with the breakout.
The breakout was for personal services, $5,579,840, and for expenses, $3,223,293.
Follow-up question?
I'm actually, recycling, joint, takes you to disposal, or something like that.
All right, one moment, please. Dig deeper. And it's a race. Department of Public Works, do you have this number readily available at your disposal? Memorize and bet it in your brain? All right, go ahead. Department of Public Works wins.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I can tell you that our recycling contract was $132,000. It got changed to $232,000. So if that helps.
Thank you. All right, thank you for that information. At this point, we'll try a vote. All those in favor of motion number three say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it unanimously, and the motion passes. Moving on to Article 26, which is to transfer funds from the Recreation retained earnings to supplement or reduce the fiscal year 24 budget. This is on page 32 of your booklets. It is moved and seconded that the town reduce the Recreation Department's receipts for fiscal year 24 by $287,232 and fund the budgetary shortfall by use of $287,232 from retained earnings as printed in the warrant. This requires a majority vote. On behalf of the sponsor, we have the Chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. FinCom's recommendation is unanimously for favorable action on Article 26. The effect of the motion is to reduce the Rec Department's receipts for FY '24 by the same number that we are funding the budget shortfall from retained earnings. This is an accounting adjustment required by the Department of Revenue. We have done this in the last couple of years, one year, sorry. Last year, we did this as well. We think this will slowly, this will stop. The Rec Department revenues are growing too fast, and we're making this accounting adjustment in the interim. I should say that I incorrectly said that Stacy did all of the hard work on these three motions, and actually, I left out Jennifer Cafarella. And if I left out Jennifer Cafarella, anyone who knows Jennifer, I'm going to be in big trouble. So I thank you to Jennifer as well, and we urge favorable action on Article 26.
May we hear a recommendation from the Select Board?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Select Board voted unanimously favorable action on this article.
Any questions or comments from Town Meeting members? Seeing no one rise, I believe you are ready for the vote. A majority vote is required. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion passes unanimously. We are moving on to Article 29, which is a citizen's petition to amend Chapter 2, Section This article can be found on page 35. Amendments were provided to the meeting by the town clerk and is available also on the handouts outside if you would like a hard copy.
One second. If you're going to have, it's going to be down here, we couldn't get the, okay, the other one to work. Oh, got it, okay. All right. Present review is not. Okay.
On behalf of, my apologies, on behalf of the citizen's petition, Mr. Timothy Matthews.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and good evening, fellow Town Meeting members. I am one of the proponents of Article 29, which is aimed at ensuring more transparency and balance in Finance Committee's advice to Town Meeting. So just sort of to set the stage, I wanted to talk first about what I'd like to cover tonight. The first thing is, why is this citizen's petition article before Town Meeting in the first place? How do we, as the proponents, propose addressing the issues we see? And if we don't do this, move forward with this particular article, what happens? I realize there was a conversation that we, as Town Meeting members, need to have, and we weren't having. I do think there are some structural issues with Finance Committee that we need to fix. And I took the opportunity, after getting somewhat involved with the education budgeting process last spring, to research them intensely for months, and I want us to begin a conversation to talk about this. If we end with some resolution of issues tonight, that's great. If it ends up being a longer process that should go to a study committee, that's great as well, but we need to use this open meeting to begin the conversation. Fundamentally, Finance Committee serves as an advisory body to Town Meeting, but the power to actually raise and allocate revenue is vested with us, the Town Meeting members. The mission of Finance Committee is to provide balanced advice and analysis for Town Meeting members' benefit and also to guard against any financial malfeasance that might exist in the town. Obviously, there are other controls as well, but this is one of the key places where controls are placed upon, the way we allocate money. Finance Committee is not intended to be a policymaking body. I've heard a lot, the word "independence" used a lot over previous months, and that word does not actually mean freedom for oversight or critique. It means ethical and balanced conduct and advice provided to Town Meeting members. Now Winchester's, we've seen this in a couple of different formats over the past couple of years, but Winchester's financial resilience has actually consistently overperformed modeling and expectations. The particular chart that's on the screen right now comes from the FinCom presentation to Fall 2021 Town Meeting. And you can see that, obviously, you know, the two different scenarios that were presented here had very different outcomes from where we find ourselves in terms of our free cash position here in fiscal year... in terms of our free cash position here in fiscal year 23, moving into 24. Again, last spring, we saw another example of how we've consistently overperformed versus the models that have existed. Obviously, there were three projections provided and we've actually even exceeded the optimistic projection so far in looking at how much free cash there is. The town is now at a high watermark and I want to thank Mariona Galbaf for providing this chart, but the town is now at a high watermark with free cash far above any prior estimates that we've seen. You can see that now we've actually inched up off this chart to 18.66%, which is substantially above any of the prior modeling. And I think we really need to start asking the question of whether this is the right amount of free cash and whether the decisions that we're making are actually aligning, especially in the context of this capital crisis that's being talked about a lot, with Winchester's reserve policy. Another issue that I've run into in sort of looking at this is the fact that FinCom membership is not currently guaranteed under the Winchester bylaw to represent all precincts in town equally. And what that really means is kind of an interesting thing because obviously I don't think any of us believe that FinCom has to be perfectly representative of each precinct. Indeed, instead of that, what we're really looking for is making sure that when human factors come into play, we have a balanced group of folks from all across town that actually are able to speak to the particular concerns that come up in their neighborhoods. And as you see here, we have one precinct in particular that's incredibly overrepresented in the membership of FinCom. Whereas, you know, I'm coming from Precinct 1, which, you know, we've had quite a bit of turbulence over the past year. I mean, for those of you that have tried to drive down Cross Street and looked at the playground article that we voted on previously, there's been a lot going on in our precinct as well and I think it's important to have everybody's, when we're making human decisions for the actual humans that live in town, make sure that there's an equal number of people from across town represented at tables where decisions are made. Now, I'd like to also look at what other challenges we face. The current Finance Committee bylaw language is actually out of step with the majority of Massachusetts communities. There's an increasing gap between the sort of closed-off deliberations of Finance Committee and the broader sense of town meeting. When I tried to get some more information about school committee last spring, I actually found out that Finance Committee was discontinuing the public recording of their meetings and also there was a tremendous backlog in terms of the minutes that were provided. So it was really hard as a town meeting member to try to get more of a sense of what was going on, particularly around deliberations on schools. And I think we also suffer from the fact that though our bylaw says that there should actually be written analysis on articles delivered in advance to town meetings on specific financial matters, we haven't really been receiving that advice in a written format, which I think would allow us all to prepare better. So how do peer communities compare to Winchester? I actually did quite an exhaustive analysis and then ended up focusing primarily on towns with a similar size to ours, 20,000 to 30,000 people in terms of population. If you look at the whole Commonwealth of Massachusetts, a majority of finance committees across the state have five, seven, or nine members. The majority are appointed solely by the moderator and those committees all widely disseminate their findings and deliberations in detailed and clear ways, particularly through written reports. In some towns, I actually saw that not only was the motion book actually provided with the Finance Committee's report in, but it also listed clearly the recommendations of every committee in that motion book when folks received it in advance of town meeting. I also then, as I said, looked at communities of similar size to Winchester and what I learned when I actually applied a sort of average benchmark, which was to look at the number of residents in the community per Finance Committee member, we're actually at the lowest end of that ratio, which means when we're appointing Finance Committee members, we actually have a much smaller pool of the population of the town to draw from because of the fact that relative to the size of Winchester as a town, we're actually asking for more than average number of Finance Committee members to serve. And so I would say that this is a fairly good representation of some peer communities to ours. I also looked at the size of the budget as a proxy for the complexity of the budget and tried to sort of fairly represent a different, a group of communities. But basically what you see here is that even in communities like Lexington, which has a very large budget and a tremendous amount of complexity, they actually have almost three times as many people in town per Finance Committee member than we do. As a large town, they actually serve with a Finance Committee of nine. And you'll also see in the last column that the appointment method, even in these larger communities with more complexity, overwhelmingly tends to be the moderator making that decision alone. I also, just as a side note, looked to see if there were any communities in Massachusetts that separated out the initial appointment process and the reappointment process and I was not able to find any evidence that that exists. I've heard a lot that Article 29 seems complex. It goes over, I think, four pages in the book that you've all received, but really all the changes in it fall into three thematic buckets. There are three overarching goals that underpin all the changes. Number one, to ensure maximum transparency and openness in our financial process as represented by Finance Committee. The second one is that we, even though I think the PowerPoint has changed the numbers, the second one is that we need to rebalance the committee to ensure that all Winchester's voices are represented equitably. And third, we need to root the appointments process firmly in town meeting as the legislative branch. There's been some discussion about this. Obviously, the current appointing authority has the moderator on it, but it also has the Chair of the Finance Committee as well as the Chair of Select Board and that isn't really rooted in the actual work that the town meeting members do. So each of the proposed changes here, and I'll just run through them quickly, falls into one of those three buckets. Under the bucket of ensuring maximum transparency and openness, it requires FinCom to hold at least one virtual meeting, as long as the state statutes permit that. Important in the post-pandemic area era because a lot of people are taking this for granted and it would give a chance for more folks to attend. Second, to work with town staff to determine the actual articles with financial implications that are voted on for recommendations and presented to town meeting. Third, more visibility into the full spectrum of debate that's at the Finance Committee table. And it also, fourth, codifies the necessity of all Finance Committee members complying with state law around service on campaign committees. The second bucket is to rebalance the committee to ensure that all voices are represented equitably. As I said, looking at the average number of folks in Winchester versus the number of Finance Committee members, I believe that sort of placing us in the middle of that chart that I put up would have us at an 11-member committee that aligns with the town's population and budget size and makes it easier to recruit candidates, especially due to burnout factors. It ensures members from all precincts and also no more than two members from any single precinct and time for the first time would be required off the committee after two terms. The third bucket is rooting the appointments process in town meeting, which is the legislative branch of Winchester. First, eight seats would be selected by you, the town meeting members in each of our eight precincts. And then the moderator would be empowered to add three to consider needed expertise. This is somewhat similar to what's done in Arlington, our neighbor community, where they actually do have a Finance Committee from every one of their, I believe it's 21 precincts, so slightly more complicated than ours. And the final output here, of course, is to refocus FinCom on its charge as an advisory body to town meeting members. I really believe that if we don't do this, we'll end up in a situation that isn't long-term sustainable. We really need to take this opportunity to strengthen the relationship between Finance Committee and town meeting. There's an increasing number of articles that we've seen in recent years with substantial disagreement between the Finance Committee recommendation and the overall sense of town meeting members. We've had continuing reversal of budget cuts that are made in the Yellow Sheet. One example of that that was very clear was the Planning Board consultant funds that were cut by Finance Committee in the spring town meeting and then were restored overwhelmingly by members of town meeting. And I believe there's also been a breakdown of trust around the lack of transparency and written reporting available to town meeting members and appointing authority that was incapable of following its statutory timeline to constitute the 2023-24 FinCom. And also this ongoing dispute that we've heard about here in Fall 2023 Town Meeting over the capital planning process, whether engineering studies should be permitted without funding sources identified, et cetera. So in summary, there are three things I hope we can do with this particular effort. First, to ensure transparency...
You've reached your 10 minutes?
May I have two minutes, Madam Moderator, to finish up?
Town meeting, the Speaker would like to have two minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it? Two minutes.
Thank you. So to ensure transparency, the process of budgeting and allocating financial resources is complex and interdependent already. The Communications Study Committee has noted that we need more and not less transparency for good governance and I believe without meeting recordings available, subcommittee meetings and work not available to town meeting members, an increased visibility of the work is paramount. Second, we need to empower all voices across town to be heard. Our bylaw is deficient at this moment in that it provides no guardrails to ensure broad representation and we really need a balanced perspective that faithfully represents those from all walks of life and neighborhoods who call our town home. Finally, we need to celebrate the unique and important role of town meeting. This is a New England form of governance. I'm not from here originally and I know that this body can be really messy, but it also has the power to be participatory and great grassroots, which I hope this would actually accomplish. So I'd like to say thank you and then I would like to, with Madam Moderator's permission, offer an amendment to...
Give me one second.
Yes.
You can't make a motion to amend because I haven't read it in, but if you let me now, I can now read it in because I have the document.
Thank you.
So to all town meeting members, the handout you received is stated revised Monday, November 6, 2023. It is moved and seconded that Section 4.1 of Chapter 2 of the Town of Winchester Code of Bylaws be amended as documented on your document dated Monday, November 6, 2023. It is now in place. You can make a motion to amend.
Okay, so...
Point of order, that's not available. Is that available?
It was available. People picked it up on the first night of town meeting.
It's that?
No.
No.
We don't have the slide. Matt, do you have a slide?
But the slide is up. There's not a text of it.
We've not seen that. We've never seen that.
So Madam Moderator, if I may?
Yep. Can you please proceed with your motion?
So what I believe we need to do, at your discretion, is there are two things that are at issue here. The first is that there was actually the corrections that were made as a result of my conversation with the Government Regulations Committee, which have been on the table since Monday night, a week ago. And I will leave it to your discretion as to how you would like to handle that because that would need to have the seven-day notice period waived in order to be made part of the motion. I would also like to make a motion to amend Article 29 separately from that.
Town meeting members, will you please waive the seven-day notice for the motion to amend on Article 29? No, it's not FinCom's turn.
To the motion to waive the notice?
Usually we just go to right to vote, to waive it. It was on the table for town meeting. It was a handout. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Town meeting, actually, it has been over seven days since we commenced, so it's an order, actually. The motion to amend, you're bringing up to my attention now. Can you please describe what the motion to amend is?
So the motion to amend removes the existing language of Article 29 and replaces it with the language that you see in a slide on the screen, which is to establish a Finance Committee Study Committee. And I just want to be clear that this is not related to the discussions that the town clerk has had with us regarding bylaw review. This is a special case specifically related to Finance Committee. So instead of moving forward with the main text of the Article 29 motion, we would instead replace that language with the language that's currently shown on the screen, which would establish an 11-member Study Committee appointed by a mixture. So this is modeled on the language from the Communications Study Committee previously, where a mixture of town precinct members and the moderator would appoint folks to a Study Committee. So I'm offering this as an amendment to the motion.
Give me one moment to consult with counsel.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Point of information?
Yep.
There is a lot of confusion right now, I'm sorry, between that long presentation and what's going on in front of us. I think we all need a little bit of time to digest this amendment that is in front of us. I'm sorry, I've not seen it at all. I don't know if anyone else has. Point of information?
Yep. If you give me a minute, I will come back to town meeting with some information. Mr. Matthews, I believe the language that you are looking for is not a motion to amend, it's a motion to refer to a Finance Study Committee.
Aye.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So town meeting members, the motion has just been made that instead of going forward with Article 29, that they would like to refer to a ad hoc committee of town meeting. And the outline of that, of the Study Committee on behalf of town meeting is outlined on... Can you please provide town meeting more information on what that committee would look like and what... Madam Moderator, point of order, if none of us have...
Can you make it? Because it's right now not in presentation view.
We can read it into record? Is there any way to have paper copies changed somehow or being available? We don't have the ability to print it out. So this is a new kind of thing that's going on right now. So town meeting, usually, right, we vote, we make motions to amend. You usually can get... This is not actually a motion to amend. It is to refer Article 29 and the issues that he's presenting to a committee to be reviewed, to then come back?
Fall 2024 Town Meeting.
To come back to town meeting with recommendations on how to address some of the concerns and if there aren't concerns, they'd come back and say there aren't concerns. I'm assuming?
Correct.
Point of order?
Yes.
The proponent knew, said he was going to do this when he asked for two minutes. We voted in two minutes. I do not see how we get any extra time.
I think it's any extra time.
I don't need... Madam Moderator, I don't need any extra time at this point.
Madam Moderator, can you please repeat that part back from here?
He asked that I don't give the Speaker any more time. Mr. Deering?
Madam Moderator, I've been a member of this body for 41 years and I'm trying to say that I've never had an issue with anybody in the Finance Committee, how they perform and approval of the voting is the financial sector, the typical airborne all these years. So we'll say it is in open, open picks. The members said that I move to indefinitely postpone this out.
That's out of order. Give me a minute and we can get to that. So there's a motion to send to an ad hoc committee, the concerns that were voiced. Is there a second? There's a second on the floor. We need... So town meeting, I hear your voice that you would like to review this prior to debating it. At this time, we can distribute it. We're getting close to the 9:30 hour and given the business before us, unless you want to stay till about midnight, I think we probably should reconvene and come back on Thursday and then you'll have time to review this and you have a point of order? I think it's a simple majority. Yes. To the will of the meeting, would you like to continue all the way through the meeting this evening and go through every article that we have remaining? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Please let your clickers out. Madam Moderator, point of order? I don't know what I'm voting on, so can you just repeat what we're voting on right this second? We will once it gets up. Be voting needs to get ready for it. At this moment, I... At this moment, we are moving to make a decision using your clickers if you want to continue through the entire meeting's open agenda this evening or if you... through the entire meeting's open agenda this evening, or if you would like to adjourn and come back on Thursday.
Madam Moderator, my point of order was maybe to continue through this article and try to get what they've done, but not necessarily to get through the entire... So, it would just be continuing with the debate on our...
Do you think we should have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, essentially, that is what it is, and it needs a simple majority to pass or to fail.
Why is my motion to indefinitely postpone?
Because there was a different motion that was on the floor. There's a different motion on the floor. The speaker had put on a motion to go to an ad hoc committee.
So, don't we need to vote on that?
Well, we'll tell that in a little bit.
Hold your comments, Mr. Deering.
So, sorry, Madam Moderator, just a point of order once again. Mr. Matthews, point A, point to refer to committee, and then...
Town meeting members expressed to the moderator that they wanted time to review what was on the screen, and they wanted it in paper form. To be able to do that, we need time, and so I am asking town meeting if they would like to, at this point, if they would like to adjourn, or if they want to continue with the meeting, but there was a request from town meeting members to get this in paper form. We cannot do that immediately, and to do that takes time.
But, Madam Moderator, I rescind my request for paper form. I'd like to continue.
There are other members who requested as well.
So, my point of order is that we're asking for more time for just this specific article, but doesn't mean that we're asking for these all in town meeting, right?
That is correct. However, we're reaching the 9:30 hour, and so that's why I'm asking town meeting members what they would like to do, if they would like to proceed, or if they would like to adjourn and come back on Thursday. It was a voice vote, and you could not determine majority. The vote is coming in, so right now you are voting if you would like to adjourn the meeting at this time and come back on Thursday, or if you'd like to continue on with the meeting.
Madam Moderator, do you want to clarify?
So, what do you want?
Yeah. A vote in affirmative means that you want to continue the meeting. A vote in the negative means that you do not want to continue the meeting, and you want to come back on Thursday.
Point of information, Madam Moderator, if we vote to continue the meeting, may there be a later motion to end the meeting?
Yes.
Or if this motion will expire?
You know, you can always... Town meeting can always override their own votes.
Thank you.
I have a point of information.
Yes.
Is a motion to indefinitely postpone Mr. Matthews' motion now in order?
Well, right now, you can't talk about that because we have a mo... We're deciding to give it a minute, let this vote go place, and then we will...
Do we have to debate this motion?
No. It's a will of the meeting. It is a simple will of the meeting to give your moderator direction. You have to take a vote of it. Okay. Okay, did you tell them? Oh. Again, this is just a will of the meeting, so your moderator has direction to follow from the meetings. The majority rules on how we proceed. The motion that I'm asking you, it's really just a will question. Do you want to concede, continue, or would you like to stop? It is almost 9:30, a few minutes short, and come back on Thursday. Yes?
It seems to me it's conditional. If we indefinitely postpone this, because we can't get through the remainder of the articles, we still don't know a way to get through this one, there's no possibility to get through the other ones.
We also can't predict any of the articles at the... It's just if you want me to proceed or adjourn, it's 9:30. It's as simple as that. It's... It is a will of the meeting, a vote in affirmative means you would like to adjourn at this time and return. Would like to continue the meeting. How is it? Yes.
Yes. We re... I will do it correctly. You're all making my head spin, because everyone's trying to use different things. We all have to go by Robert's rules here, and I know it's not easy, and it's very uncomfortable for a lot of people, and it's not easy to move quickly with what's going on.
So with that, the motion is, if we want to continue, if you go in the affirmative, yes. If you would not like to continue, and you would like to come back on Thursday, you vote no.
Who made that motion?
It is the will of the moderator. I would like direction from the meeting.
Are you in your hands of the motion?
I took a voice vote, and no one... It was unable to determine what the majority of the meeting wanted. Please turn the light on.
Point of order? I still don't understand what the will of the meeting is.
We're in the middle... It means if you... Do you want to continue or not?
Normally, a vote to adjourn, the affirmative is to adjourn, and the negative is not to adjourn. It's the other way around.
It's the way I stated it. Your vote in affirmative is to continue, a vote in the negative is that you would like to come back on Thursday. To continue, we will continue as the majority has showed the moderator they would like to continue.
Madam Moderator, if I make my motion now to indefinitely postpone?
An indefinite postponement is not allowed on a motion to move to an ad hoc committee. I'm sorry. That's according to Robert's rules. Thank you. It's a will of the meeting, so it's less... It's not a formal document and vote. It's for... So the moderator knows what the meeting would prefer overall. But we can... We will correct it.
Point of information, was Article 29 open as a motion?
It was opened, and then I was trying to send it to ad hoc committee.
How can that be turned into moving to ad hoc committee with an open motion?
It's part of the procedure of how you...
Can you interrupt?
They can interrupt.
Who was it?
Mr. Matthews. He's out.
Interrupted himself?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to go review what exactly just happened, so all of you are very clear on what happened. The will of the meeting is a casual vote, just from my knowledge, it's from my information. Prior to that, Article 19 was presented by the citizen's petitioner.
29.
29 was presented by the citizen's petitioner. In the review of it, they changed their mind and made a motion that they would rather think it would better, and they could use their own words to you directly, to go to an ad hoc committee to have the issues that were brought up reviewed by town meeting as a whole. Now, there's concerns from town meeting members what the composition of that ad hoc committee looks like, because they are not the words. I can put them on the screen, we can read them, we can go onward to other articles and come back to it, so you can get the language. We have staff here who can print them for you. We have options before us, but there was concern about not being able to see it. So if you have a point of privilege to be able to see it, please let us know, we can get you handouts. Mr. Matthews, where are you? Can you please read your motion to go to ad hoc committee?
So, the motion to amend is as follows. Moved and seconded that a committee be formed and authorized to meet regularly and as required until the conclusion of the 2024 Fall Town Meeting to study, advise, and report to town meeting regarding a potential revision of Chapter 2, Section 4.1 of the Town of Winchester's Code of Bylaws, and that's to be called the Finance Committee Study Committee, or FCSC. In specific, the FCSC shall, one, review the composition, appointment, and duties of Winchester's Finance Committee; two, review the composition, appointment, and duties of the finance committees of other Massachusetts towns; three, solicit input from Winchester's town meeting members, elected and appointed boards, and town staff; four, hold one or more public hearings and encourage town meeting member input through surveys or other means; five, provide a final written and verbal report to the Fall 2024 Town Meeting, including recommendations and possible revisions to Section 4.1. Recommendations may include draft language for proposed articles or motions to be placed before town meeting. The FCSC shall, one, review any proposed changes to policy or procedures with the Rules Committee, Government Regulations Committee, and Town Council; two, include estimated staffing or budgetary impacts of any recommendation; and further, that the town moderator be authorized to form such FCSC consisting of 11 voting members and two ex officio members. Voting members shall consist of three citizens at large to be appointed by the town moderator, and one town meeting member or precinct resident from each of the town's eight precincts, elected by a vote of the town meeting members from each precinct, and excluding from its membership the town moderator, select board members, and any current Finance Committee member. Ex officio members shall consist of the town manager and their designee, and one sitting member of Finance Committee.
Madam Moderator, may I ask a point of information?
What's your point of information?
When you... Just before this was read before, we said it was a motion to refer, and when he just read it aloud, it was a motion to amend. I'm questioning whether or not it is a motion to refer.
It's a motion to refer.
Okay. I have one more point of information.
Yep.
If it is a motion to refer at this point, can it be indefinitely postponed, or is that what you're saying under Robert's rules cannot happen?
Essentially what Mr. Matthews is saying is he wants Article 29 indefinitely postponed, and a committee of town meeting created to review.
Right, so I guess my point of information for that, which is unclear to me, and I apologize. Earlier, when Mr. Bettencourt amended his article, we voted to amend the article, and then we voted on the article. This, to me, feels backwards to what we just did. So I'm asking if Robert's rules are different when you're referring versus...
It's correct. It's different when you refer to a committee.
Okay. So if we say, yes, refer to a committee, we can either vote to refer to a committee...
Yep.
Or we can do... And that automatically indefinitely postpones his article? But if... But we now are only voting to refer to a committee?
Yes.
I apologize. This is... Just does not seem straightforward, and it seems like one of those things that should be allowed to be indefinitely. So I guess I want to hear from Robert's rules where it says we can't indefinitely postpone. And how we know it's a point to refer versus...
I don't want to put it in my words, I'm going to give you the actual Robert's rules words. It's done. Article 29 is done, and we move on to Article 30. It means Article 29 has been moved on and is going to go to a committee of town meeting.
And if we vote not to send?
It goes back to Article 29.
They need to move for indefinite...
And then you can move for indefinite postponement.
Okay. So, right now...
So, right now, we are going to debate and discuss and ask questions on the committee?
Okay. Can I ask one question of the opponent?
Yep.
And I just... I don't know if I'm allowed to ask this, but as a citizen's petitioner, are we allowed to know who the citizens are petitioning for this?
I'm sorry, what?
As a citizen's petitioner, I know Mr. Matthews is representing the group, I didn't know if we knew we're allowed to know who the other citizens petitioning for this were. Who are the proponents of?
It's public record on the town's website, I believe.
I'm just wondering who is making up the citizen's petition? That was my question.
It's a public records request, it's on the town's website, I believe, on the town meeting. But it's...
Don't we know we are against this, like, borders?
It's not actually an appropriate question for right now?
Point of information? If we're referring to a committee, I would assume that that meant an existing committee. This looks more like creating a committee than referring to a committee.
There is no committee in place right now to review Finance Committee.
That's right, but this motion does not look like a real committee. It looks like a petition.
It's what that committee would be. It's not a formal committee in our bylaws.
Right. But we are following a path of voting, which is unusual, because we're referring to committees, but in fact...
You're debating, actually, right now, the things, though I recommend you get to the microphone, so you can give your recommendation. You're actually debating the motion on the floor, and so have a point of information. Do you have a question?
No, point of order, Madam Moderator?
Yep.
I'm having a real difficult time following a lot of response of order, because people aren't at the microphone, and I have to do it probably. So, if you can encourage people to step to the microphone, but I'm not hearing anyone.
Town meeting members are struggling... Town meeting members are struggling to hear the motions that are being made, so if you could, please come to the microphone if you have a point of order or a point of clarification versus speaking from your seat, because town meeting members cannot hear you. We'll also do it, try to be better at responding. At this time, we are debating about sending Article 29 to committee. That is what is before us.
Do you like to move the question?
There is a motion to move the question, there has been no debate, it's out of order. Give it a few minutes. Next.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Stephanie Zaramba, Precinct 2. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Stephanie Zeremba, Precinct Two. Thank you, everyone, for patience. This is obviously a little unusual. Thank you to Mr. Matthews for... Madam Moderator, could we be called to order, perhaps?
Mr. Deering, it's your second warning. Stop it. There's police out there. I'll take you out.
Thank you to Mr. Matthews, who put a lot of thought and time and research into this, and I think we will end up stronger for it. And I also thank you to the Finance Committee, past and present. You do a lot of really important, really hard work, and I think there has to be a disconnect, and it has to be something that we're identifying here. If you are all putting in so much work, I know how tired and burned out you are. I know how hard it is, and yet Town Meeting members are feeling sometimes not as well-informed as they might like to be, or identifying that there are questions or concerns. One thing I've noticed, and that I... the reason why I really do support this going to a study committee is there's been a little bit of a change in the tenor in our dialogues over the past several years, where we started talking so much more about numbers, and we've stopped talking about people. And this is not a corporation. This is a community. We're not just here to... you know, we don't have a fiduciary duty to maximize value to shareholders. We are all here. Like, I can say... I feel very certain to say every single person is in this room because you care about your community, you care about your neighbors, you care about this town. And I don't feel like we are pulling that through as much as we used to. So, you know, I know some people are kind of sitting here saying, what are these issues? Like, why are we doing this? This makes no sense. And so I'm just representing there are Town Meeting members, because I am one, who do feel like something isn't quite right anymore, and I very much am in support of us. This doesn't hurt anything. Take a year. See what everyone thinks. See if there are issues. Study it. Study what other towns are doing. And if after that we come back and nothing changes, we'll be stronger for it. If we come back and we do make some changes to our bylaws, we'll be stronger for it as a community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Megan Blackwell, Precinct Seven. I have a lot of questions on Article 29 and this motion to refer to a nonexisting committee, but I'll start with one question I have about the timing of this. So this proposal to refer is proposing to take a full year, so until the fall... the conclusion of the 2024 Fall Town Meeting. So we have five seats in the Finance Committee that will expire in the spring of 2024, and with this magnifying glass that is proposed, I am very concerned that we will have no applicants, and maybe that will obviate the need for such a committee. But I'm really concerned about the timing because of its impact. Thank you.
Further on the question?
Jackie Welch, Precinct Five. First of all, I wanted to thank the proponents for their time and dedication to town. I've been involved in town government in some form for 27 years, whether Select Board, Personnel Board, Planning Board, Town Meeting member. It's been an honor. I've definitely seen Town... the Town's Finance Committee kind of ebb and flow, either stating positions really directly, being more, you know, maybe waiting for the tenor of Town Meeting, or some variation in between then. I guess for me, I wanted to just sort of comment that, for me personally, I don't view the FinCom as simply a function or part of Town Meeting. In the various roles I've had, which are not as many as some others here in this room, but in my own personal experience, FinCom and its members, its chair, not necessarily the specific group before you, but historically has been active, available for Select Board, available for Personnel Board throughout the governance of the town throughout the year. So I think that when we're thinking about this committee, which I don't have any philosophical disagreement with, I do think that one of the things that sort of bothers me slightly is that I think that the notion should really be more that it's not just... FinCom is not just a resource for Town Meeting, which in and of itself is a wonderful thing, obviously, but it's a tremendous committee throughout the year and has a really important function for all the other bodies and boards having to do with town government and the functioning of our town. A couple other things. I think that the composition should absolutely include former FinCom members. You know, arguably, you could even say a couple current members, but at a bare minimum, some former FinCom members, because no one really knows, other than them, what the actual demands are. Also, I would just sort of comment that even though it doesn't directly relate to the question in front of us, which is whether to refer to a committee, but there was a slide about whether or not 15 is too many people. The work of the FinCom is a tremendous burden, but they're very dedicated people, and they're all volunteers. So frankly, I think that being compared with Wellesley with... we're closer to their size than Lexington. Wellesley had 15. I think those four towns at the bottom of that one particular slide, I think they're more comparable to our town. I'm happy that we have 15 FinCom members. It's a lot of work. They meet regularly and often, and I think it's good for them to have both a variety of opinions as well as lots of people on it, including in case there's any, you know, issues with personal schedules, that sort of thing. So to sum up, I just think that this... if we're going to vote on this, it should be viewed as more of a positive, kind of what the last speaker on this side was saying, rather than a criticism. So as an example, the Communications Working Group that was formed, and I don't want to miss out on some people who were involved in that. I know Carol Savage was directly involved with that. That was a positive, and I think that if we're going to do this approach, it should be viewed as a positive. Just... it's good to look at anything that we do and sort of think, oh, you know, maybe we should make some adjustments here or there. Maybe we don't have to make any. But I... for me personally, I am a little defensive about FinCom, and I don't think that this should be viewed as sort of like a criticism of them, and that as if we're going to form this committee because we're criticizing them. I think that would be really misplaced. So anyway, thank you so much. Sorry for the time.
Jackie, just to confirm, you did not have a motion to amend, correct?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Jared Cummings, Precinct Four. I rise in opposition to this referral and the underlying article from which it came. I appreciate Mr. Matthews' work and the proponents' work in putting all this work together, doing all the research. I appreciate FinCom's work and the work that they do to make this a better town, similar to Select Board and all the work that they do to make this a better town. There's quite a bit of math in the underlying proposal and proponents' slideshow. There was one piece of math that was missing, though, and that's zero. Zero is what a balanced budget looks like, which is what FinCom delivered in the spring. That's an important number. And no, there's no fiduciary duty, speaking to one of the prior speakers, but there is a duty that we all have to be good stewards of the town's tax dollars. We all pay in to this town. We all pay taxes, and this body and FinCom and the Select Board all work together to make sure that those are used well and fairly. And I have seen in my short time on Town Meeting, playgrounds voted to be improved, traffic calmed, and many bridges studied, bridges improved, and many, many other things to improve the overall quality in this town. I see a large school budget and lots and lots going on in our schools that we have to be very, very proud of. So we do a good job as a town. The Finance Committee does a good job, and the Select Board does a good job moving this town forward with the precious tax dollars that fund it. So zero is also a number that refers to the number of reasons to change FinCom. There are none. This is a solution desperately in search of a problem that does not exist. We heard 12 minutes of insinuation about intent of FinCom. There are no reasons to change FinCom as it stands today, so I urge you all to vote against this referral and the underlying article. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please stay with the context of the motion to consider. Go ahead.
The motion to refer?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm going to do that in a backhanded way. We did have to sit through 12 minutes of what was wrong with FinCom with the desperate knowledge that at the end somebody was going to do a bait and switch. So I think I can go back at it backhandedly. In the original presentation, there was a whole lot of stuff about representation and whether these groups were represented or those groups were represented, and whether there was a disagreement between the FinCom and... or there was a disconnect between the FinCom and Town Meeting. But stuck in the middle was some financial charts, which weren't tied in. So I don't know why there were three or four financial charts which showed that the town was doing better than FinCom was predicting, but I'm sure, having been FinCom Chair and having instated in my period there the start of the... of financial modeling, I'm sure that that's not an accident and that it happened in spite of FinCom's best efforts, but in fact, might have happened because they were guarding the cash. But the thing that was... that made me most nervous, that made my FinCom former chair spidey sense go absolutely ballistic, was when they started... was when he started talking about how free cash is growing. Now, if people had come to the meetings when I was chair, they would have heard the term "stinking pile of cash." And if you've ever seen a cash grab, when Town Meeting decides that there is some money hanging around that isn't being used and they just happen to know how to use it, it's a pretty frightening thing. And that's... when I saw that graph, what I saw was a group of people who were saying, the money's building up in town, town is getting a little cushy, and we want to spend it. So that was my fear with that one. So that... given that, I lost my trust with this group, and with losing my trust with this group, I distrust this committee. And what I would suggest is that instead of taking this committee, let's suggest there is something wrong with FinCom, but let's take the year to build that committee, not starting with this committee. And that would be my recommendation.
Madam Moderator, Dorothy Symboli, Precinct Six. I apologize for not bringing up these two points of order sooner, but I had to use the microphone. So my two questions are, and hopefully Town Council can address this. The first point of order is, does Roberts rules allow the proponent to refer his own article to a committee? And my second point of order is, I don't see how we can create a committee out of a referral. Meeting like Roberts rules allows us to refer it to a committee presuming an existing committee. When we voted, this body voted to create the Communications Study Committee, it was an article. It was presented, and we voted as Town Meeting to create the Communications Study Committee. This is a referral to now create a Finance Committee Study Committee, and I'm just not sure if one can do that, if Roberts rules allows that. It doesn't make sense to me. It seems like an end run around how we're supposed to be creating committees in this town.
It's not a formal committee in the bylaws, but I will allow Town Council to further give information to Town Meeting on how ad hoc committees work. It is not in the same manner as the study committee that's being provided.
Good... they're all good questions, Dorothy, but whether it's Roberts rules of order or Town Meeting time and other parliamentary manual or the Massachusetts general laws, Town Meeting has the authority to create an ad hoc committee. It does not have to be a referral to a specific committee. It can create a committee on its own, or it could refer to no committee at all, but just refer generally to study. The procedural device of a motion to commit or refer could be refer to existing, refer generally, refer to a committee created by this body. This body has the authority to make specific committees, not standing committees like we see in the bylaw, but these types of committees. So all that is fine. As to your original question as to Mr. Matthews' ability to refer or move to refer his earlier motion, there's no procedural device against that or no procedural bar under Roberts from him doing that. It could have been done as an original main motion, or he could have raised it on his own at any time.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Further on the question?
Madam Moderator, thank you. My name is Karen Conley, Precinct Three. I think there is a whole lot to say about this, and it's unfortunate that the hour is so late. What I think is especially unfortunate is most of the discussion I've heard tonight has been about Roberts rules of orders and a lot of fussing about whether we should even think about this. I would support this motion because I think that there is nothing wrong with studying or reconsidering what we in the town do that is so incredibly important. The Finance Committee, the role is huge. It's an incredibly important piece of town government. There is, whether you agree or disagree with what they have done, there appears to me to be in this body a sense that people either don't understand it, they hear from it too late, is some of it that people don't attend meetings and we don't read things that are sent to us. I suspect that's a large part of it. But I really don't think that establishing a committee to study this with given as much time as it's saying can result in anything other than strengthening an important committee. And yes, as everyone else has done, I thank you all for your service and your hours. I thank the Select Board. I thank everybody who's here, but I think if we spent less time fighting about what was a point of order and more time talking about what was on the table, we might get things done before 11 o'clock at night.
Further on the question?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I threw you to the Town Council. The petitioner has set forth his own form of this ad hoc study committee that isn't something that Town Meeting has to abide by, correct?
I'm not quite sure what you're asking. Can you please...
Does the Finance Committee Study Committee have to follow the form that's been proposed?
That's what we're actually debating at this point.
Okay. The second question I have, why can't the petitioners be listed? I mean, we spent 10 minutes trying to find exactly how much money DPW is to recycle trash. Why can't we list those names?
Well, it's out of order because the right before us now is... you know who brought it before you.
One name, not the whole. I mean, I spent 20 minutes trying to find it on the town website. Couldn't find it. From my information...
I will have staff look into it.
And lastly...
They don't have it. They don't have it.
Lastly, I just want to remind Town Meeting that we don't have a financial responsibility to our shareholders, but we do to our taxpayers. Thank you.
Move the question requires a two-thirds vote. It is non-debatable. If you take your clickers out, we will make the motion. We'll do the vote. A vote in the affirmative means that you would like to stop debate and move immediately to voting on the question before you. A vote in the negative means that you do not want to stop debating to send to committee. All Town Meeting members vote. All registered correctly. Having 160 members voting, 107 required for adoption, 106 in the affirmative has it, and 44... 106 in the affirmative, 44 in the negative. The affirmative has it, and the motion passes. The debate has ended. We will now go vote on the motion to send to committee.
Motion to amend.
You actually can't, unfortunately.
Okay. I mean, so we'll be voting on... I mean, so we'll be voting on sending it to the committee with the composition that was proposed?
Yep, that is correct. Just so it's clear, so everyone could hear, that there was a motion to amend the -- Oops. Went back on its own. It's got a mind of its own. We're not there yet. So, there was a motion made, but it's out of order as a motion was made to go directly into vote and it passed. So, we are unable to make any edits. We are now going to be voting to either -- to send Article 29 to a committee. The committee's formation is defined down below. That voting members shall consist of three citizens at large to be appointed by the town moderator, and one town meeting member or precinct resident from each of the town eight precincts elected by a vote of the town meeting members from each precinct and excluding from its membership the town moderator, select board members, and any current Finance Committee member. Ex-officio members shall consist of the town manager or their designee, and one sitting member of the Finance Committee. So, a vote in the affirmative means you would like to create this committee. A vote in the negative means you would not like to. It is a simple majority. We have now scrolled. Is everyone's vote registered correctly? Seeing no one rise, 62 in affirmative, 95 in the negative, the negative has it, and the motion is lost. Returning back to Article 29. Mr. Dearing, you would now be in order.
Madam Moderator, I would like to make a motion indefinitely postpone.
No, we have a second. So, the Select Board, do you have a recommendation? Please just say yes or no.
I had to think about it for a second. We voted unanimously favorable action to indefinitely postpone, and I'll also just add that the Select Board has not had a chance to weigh in on this yet, but we think that this is appropriate for a bylaw charter review, which the town is well overdue for, and we think that this should be part of that.
Thank you. Further on the question, yes or no, FinCom?
Could you get me to this thing?
Yes or no? Can you do it?
Do I have a report?
Yes or no? Do you -- are you in favor or not in favor of indefinite postponement? Did you get the vote of your body? Thumbs up, thumbs down? Can we see them? Let's expedite it. I would assume you're in favor.
Brian Vernagel is not in favor. Everyone else is in favor of indefinite postponement.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on indefinite postponement? A two-thirds vote is required. Oh. After, we will go to the vote.
So, again, I echo what people have said about the hard work of FinCom. It is a lot of work, and it's probably one of the more thankless positions because the other boards get a lot more credit, a lot more glory, and FinCom really only -- you only hear about people commenting on FinCom when they're angry and pissed off. So, it's a difficult job, and I appreciate it. I'm in favor of postponing this because I think we need to be thoughtful about how we make appointments and how we do things, and not just on this board, but on other boards. There have been some kinks in the processes for appointing over this year, not just for FinCom, and we really do need to examine how we do it so that we can do it in a fair way. And actually, in years past, for other boards like the DAC, there's been a lot of unfairness and a lot of things that people have questioned. And this is to really clarify and clean up the process. And I believe that the original proponent wanted to create a committee that was made up of members of this body to examine what are good ways to do it, and to get feedback and solicit feedback from this body so that it could come back to a vote before this body. However that happens, whether it's through a specific committee that's made, or reviewing our charter by indefinitely postponing this and recognizing the need, I would urge people to definitely examine and revisit how we do things so that we can do things in a clean way and we cut down on these kinds of issues and things that people feel the need to complain about. So, I appreciate what they do. I appreciate making things more transparent, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness of this body in trying to get as much information as possible to make the best decisions on behalf of our community.
Thank you very much. Indefinite postponement requires a two-thirds vote. If you get your clickers out, when the light goes on, a vote in the affirmative means that you would like to indefinitely postpone Article 29. A vote in the negative means that you do not want to indefinitely postpone, meaning that you want to continue debating this article. Are you asking for a correction? 160 members having voted, 170 required for adoption, there are 139 in the affirmative, 21 in the negative, and the motion is passed. Article 29 is indefinitely postponed. We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. And we will see you next Thursday. This Thursday at 6:30 the 16th.
Good evening once again, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Alan Idon here at the Winchester High School, and we are covering here at WindCam the third session of Winchester's Fall Town Meeting. Despite attempts by the moderator, we were not able to wrap up the Fall Town Meeting, and we'll meet again on Thursday. So, let's recap what happened tonight. We opened with comments from the moderator stressing civility at Town Meeting, the importance of the legislative branch being this Town Meeting. And she said she is here to encourage civil participation. Moving on to Article 11, which was $155,000 to purchase a piece of land in the Waterfield parking lot downtown from the MBTA. That piece of land is actually the entrance to that lot next to the adjacent building. It is necessary for the development of the lot. That was passed for $155,000. We heard a presentation on some of the problems here in the high school with the original 1970 part of the building that was not demolished during the renovation a few years ago, during the reconstruction, rather. There were flooring issues, and there are problems with concrete and the crawl spaces under. These issues seem to be accelerating, and there were some instances of rebar coming through the surfaces. So, the $100,000 was not to repair these, but do an engineering study to find out how much it was going to cost and what's involved in repairing it. That was passed. Article 14, and again, if you notice, we skipped some of the articles. Several articles, about 10 of the articles were passed on a consent agenda at the beginning of Town Meeting. So, they are essentially -- Town Meeting did not consider them debatable, or did not anticipate debate on them, rather. Article 14 was to accept a mass general law that says that rental income that the town gets from school property that is not in active use can be spent without further action by the school committee for the upkeep and maintenance of any school property. That passed. 17 was to appropriate $50,000 received from Eversource for their use of the property on Davidson and Washington Street parks during the reconstruction and to do -- for improvements to the parks. That was just to appropriate the $50,000 received from Eversource, and that passed. Article 18 was an article to appropriate up to $3.5 million, which is an estimate, for solar panels for the rebuilding of Lynch School. Some yelling down on the floor, not sure what's going on down there, but we heard that Lynch is going to be an all-electric building striving for net-zero energy use. The work would include solar panels and the structural issues, structural issues to support and to utilize the solar panels such as conduits. Federal incentives are only available for owned, not leased, panels, and that would be about $800,000. We heard the excess energy generated in the summer can be credited on town's future energy bills. Two out of three current panels on town buildings are producing excess energy. That was passed overwhelmingly. Article 19 was an article to authorize the Select Board to enter into a power purchase program should the -- the bids for the solar panels exceed the $3.5 million that Town Meeting just authorized. That also passed. Article 20 was to -- $94,000 to supplement the opioid settlement fund. Again, that was money that was received by the town, deposited in the general fund, and needed to be appropriated for the intended use. That passed. Article 22 was about $1 million to transfer to this healthcare stabilization fund from free cash. The Finance Committee voted against that. They said they wanted to keep the funds in free cash, that this reduced the flexibility of -- to be able to use free cash. There was a motion to amend it to $362,285 to maintain a 5% fund. That passed. However, a Town Meeting member made a motion to keep all the money in the free cash for maximum flexibility, and that failed. Article 24 was just some housekeeping articles to move some money from the capital stabilization fund to debt interest, from free cash to veteran services, and from free cash to DPW. All of those passed. Article 26, to increase the recreation department funds by $287,000 to match their revenues. They are an enterprise fund. That was passed. And the most contentious articles of the evening was Article 29, a citizen's petition to amend the code of bylaws for the town to change the structure of the Finance Committee. They won't go into the details here, but he said this Finance Committee should provide balanced advice, should be balanced across -- the composition of the committee should be balanced across precincts. He said the Finance Committee has not provided advance information to Town Meeting or minutes of their meetings. Their recommendations should be in the motion book, the proponent said, and he claimed that we are out of step with other towns. There was a motion, actually, the proponent made a motion to amend his article to not change the bylaws, but refer it to a study committee for presentation to the Fall Town Meeting. That failed. It got a little convoluted at that point. First of all, the Town Meeting had to take a vote to decide whether they should continue, and that involves some debate, too. And finally, you know, whether the moderator had the right to do that, which she did. And finally, there was a motion to continue the meeting, even at the late hour. And finally, the motion to amend the original motion, the original Article 29, to refer to a study committee, failed. And then there was a motion to indefinitely postpone Article 29, which, as you just saw a few minutes ago, passed. And that's where we stand. There will be -- Town Meeting will reconvene this Thursday to finish, hopefully finish up its business, beginning with Article 30. We'll be here for that coverage, and we invite you to come back here Thursday night. We thank you for staying up till this late hour. For all of us here at WindCam, I'm Alan Idon. Have a good night.